So we council has just returned from closed session. We had three items. We've gotten through one of the items, which was the city attorney evaluation. And I will ask our city attorney, is there anything to report out?
There's nothing to report out on that closed session item. However, I believe, Mayor, you're going to mention where we're going to be returning to closed session later this evening.
Yes, yes, thank you. And so, yes, as the city attorney said, we'll return to closed session to discuss the labor negotiations and the city manager evaluation after our regular meeting. So now I will call to order the regular session of the city council of the city council of Atascadero. And I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So please join me and I'm going to stop my video. So you're not staring at my stomach. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please. Councilmember Borbo?
Here.
Councilmember Darris?
Here.
Councilmember Funk?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Newsom?
Here.
Mayor Moreno?
Here.
All present. Thank you. So if you're watching or listening to the city council meeting tonight, we welcome you. If you would like to speak during the time that's set aside for community forum, or during the public comment for any of the items that are on our agenda, you can do so in a couple of ways. If you're on the webinar, there's a little raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. And so when I call for public comment, you can raise your hand and we will bring you on. You don't come on camera. So don't worry about that. But we can hear you for your public comment. If you are listening, maybe on Charter, or you're listening on KPRL, or through Slowspan, you can call in, and that is the phone number 805-538-2888. Now, when you do call in, let us know what item that you would like to speak on. All right. Again, that number for providing public comment during community forum, or any of the agenda items is 805-538-2888. I will now ask if we have approval of our agenda.
I'll move approval of our agenda.
On second. We have a motion by councilmember Borbo, and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Newsom. And we will waive the reading in full of all ordinances appearing on this agenda. And the titles of the ordinances will be read aloud by the city clerk at the first reading after the motion and before the city council votes. Is there a roll call, please? Councilmember Borbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Darris?
Yes.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes. Thank you. We have no presentations this evening. So we'll move on to the consent calendar. And this consent calendar contains items considered to be routine and non controversial by city staff and can be approved in one motion if there's no member of the council or the public that wishes to pull an item. So we'll ask, is there a member of the council that wishes to pull an item on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will look to the attendees in the webinar. If there's anyone that would like to pull an item, or you even simply have a question or a comment on anything on the consent calendar, please raise your hand. Luke, is there anyone on the phone? You would press star nine if you're on the phone, I believe, Luke. Could you let me know, is there anybody on the phone wishing to speak?
We have no callers at this moment.
Okay. And I will ask our city clerk, is there anyone who has emailed an item for public comment on the consent calendar? There is not. All right. Thank you. I will go ahead and close a public comment and bring it back to council for a motion.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
One second. We have a motion by councilmember Borbo, a second by Mayor Pro Tim Newsom. Roll call, please. Councilmember Borbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Darris?
Yes.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes. Thank you. We are on to updates from our city manager. Turn it over to Ms. Rickard.
Recording. Thank you, Mayor and council members. Can you see my screen? Okay?
We can.
All right. The first item I want to talk about tonight are youth sports and camp programs. They are starting again just in time for summer. It's pretty exciting after a year hiatus. So the summer youth basketball program registrations are currently underway for kindergarten through eighth grade. The program will start June 21st through July 30th. And we are currently taking reservations through June 14th. So you can sign up through June 14th. Anybody K through eight. For three to five year olds, we're still taking late registrations for Start Smart Baseball and Basketball. And we still have a few spaces left in each class. For our teens, we're offering an in-person teen center group fitness hour that starts this week for sixth through eighth grades and available June 17th. And there is still time to join the class. For summer camp programs, A-Town Skate Park will kick off camp the second week of June and add additional camps in July. The Charles Paddock Zoo will also be offering camp for ages three to 13, beginning June 21st. And in addition, the teen summer camp program is also in the works to kick off later this summer. As we bring back more programs, we'll continue to keep information updated, which can be found on the city's website at atascadero.org/virtualrec, or by calling the Colony Park Community Center at 805-470-3360. I also want to make a quick plug. We are still looking for part-time summer employees who'd like to help out with things like zoo camp and zoo cashiering and some of our recreation and pavilion programs. We have job openings on our website. Please take a look at that if you know somebody that looking for some part-time work this summer. Want to remind everybody that the Memorial Day Ceremony at the Faces of Freedom Veterans Memorial will be taking place Monday, May 31st at noon. There will not be a barbecue in the past. And the event organizers are following all safety COVID guidelines. But there will be a ceremony at the Veterans Memorial on the 31st. There's still time to sign up for the citywide yard sale. So don't let the deadline pass you by. May 29th is the deadline to turn your calendar, turn your clutter into cash. The yard sale will be held on Saturday, June 5th, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Events are available at atascaderoyardsale.com and at visitatascadero.com. As you remember, proceeds from this event do benefit the Joy Playground. They have some maintenance and some extra work and things they'd like to see there. So please get out and go yarding, go buy a bunch of stuff, or sign up and get rid of a lot of your clutter. I do have one last thing. I don't have a slide for it, but we did get word yesterday from Senator Laird's office, very exciting news, that SB 438, which is a bill that would allow the city of Atascadero to be repaid by its former redevelopment agency for amounts that it loaned to the redevelopment agency. SB 438 passed the Senate floor on a unanimous vote and is headed off to the Assembly. So that's very exciting news. And thank you, thank you, thank you to Senator Laird and his team for all of the work they put into this. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
We just echo that celebration and many thanks to Senator Laird, for sure. And many thanks to my colleague, Councilmember Funk, for your advocacy and work on this, too. This has been tremendous to bring this to this place. And now it's in the Assembly and we'll, we'll see where it goes from there. So any, any questions of the city manager? Councilmember Funk?
Yeah, just so that the public knows, Rochelle, can you clarify how much money is at stake for the city with SB 438?
It is just under $1.4 million that the redevelopment agency owes to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rochelle.
Thank you.
All right. So now we'll move on to community forum. And this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons who are wishing to speak to the council on any matter that's under our jurisdiction, but that is not on the agenda this evening. Speakers are limited to three minutes and we'll do a total of 30 minutes maximum tonight. We will have the timer going so you can see where you are in the, in your time limit. And we do ask that you would state your name for the record. It helps us to keep track of things. And let's see, I think that is it. So if you are in the webinar, and you would like to make any public comment, go ahead and raise your hand with that raise hand button. And I am seeing a Charles Cagna followed by Josh Cross.
I guess it's my turn then.
Yes.
Yes. My name's Charles Cagna, as you read. I represent the community church of Atascadero. I'm the president slash co-moderator for the council. And I was asked to relay to you our concerns about Proposition 218, which would become effective July 1st this upcoming summer.
Okay, so that, if I could stop you for one moment, that is on our agenda this evening. And it's actually the next item that's up. So I would ask that you save your comments for that item. Community forums for things that aren't on the agenda. Is there, is there anything else that you wanted to bring up?
Nope. That's my thing for tonight. So I'll wait.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Josh Cross.
Good evening, council members. Can you hear me? Excellent.
We can.
My name is Josh Cross. I'm the CEO of the Atascadero Chamber of Commerce, and I have two events to talk to you about tonight. The first is our shop local gift card bonus program. And this week, we are trying to wrap up soliciting businesses to join the program. Each business will be, the chamber will purchase five $20 gift cards from the business to help support them. And then starting next week on Tuesday, shoppers can collect receipts for a cumulative amount of $100, and then submit those receipts to the chamber for a $20 bonus gift card to shop at participating businesses that get downtown. So it's a great way for us to give back to the community. And it's a program we're really excited about. And many businesses have signed up. So it's an exciting and successful program. The second is the Atascadero Wine Passport. We aren't able to do an in-person wine festival this year. So we're doing a wine passport. Passport sales are on sale now. And you can purchase one by going to the chamber's website. And we have an early bird special for $65. And the passport gets you to receive complimentary tasting at 15 wineries, five breweries, two distilleries, and a cidery, all local. You get complimentary or waived corkage fees at downtown Atascadero restaurants. We have some hotel stays and a few other goodies as well. So it's a tremendous value. A value of about $350. And those passports are on sale now. Now, to celebrate this exciting passport, we're having a kickoff event on Saturday, June 26th, which would be the normal day. We'd have our wine festival and we'll be at the Zoo Garden at the Atascadero Lakeside Park. And we will have a band, Emily and the Hurricanes. We're going to have two wineries, two breweries pouring and cidery pouring. We'll have food, wine pool, and lots of other fun. So be sure to save the date, June 26th, for the wine passport kickoff party, where we'll also have wine passports for sale. So hope to see you at those events. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. And congratulations on becoming no longer the interim CEO, but the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce here in Atascadero. Good to have you. And if there's anyone else wishing to speak, go ahead and raise your hand. If you're on the phone, you can press star nine. Luke, do we have anyone on the phone wishing to provide a public comment here at community forum?
We do not.
All right. Laura, our city clerk, I will ask if we have any comments that were received via email to be read into the record. We have not received any for community forum. Okay. Seeing nothing further than the community forum portion of the meeting is closed, and we thank you for your comments. And any member of the public who has questions or needs information can always contact the city clerk's office for answers and specific information at 805-470-3400 and cityclerk@atascadero.org. Now, we're going to move on to our public hearings. And public hearing B1 is our Proposition 218 majority protest process relative to the proposed increase to the wastewater, which is sewer rates. And I will quickly ask our council if we have any expertise. And just to let you public know, expertise is us disclosing to you if we've had any conversations or receiving any information outside of the public process that is influencing our decision here this evening. And so I will just look around the screen. And is there anyone that has any expertise? I'm seeing none. I'm seeing shaking of heads, myself included. There is no expertise. And so now I will turn this over to our Public Works analyst, Mr. Ryan Betts.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council, my name is Ryan Betts. I'm the Public Works analyst. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen now with, for my presentation. And actually, let's try this. Okay, just checking, does everyone see, see my title screen for the presentation?
Yes, we do.
Wonderful. Thank you. We're here tonight to hold a public hearing in concert with the Proposition 218 majority protest process. And that's relative to a proposed increase to wastewater, sometimes known as the sewer rate increases. Just by way of background, the council, at the last council meeting on March 23rd, 2021, the council received a presentation on the wastewater rate study that was approved by the city council in May of 2019. That rate study specifically looked at the long-term capital infrastructure needs, both for the collection and the treatment of the city's wastewater system. We looked at associated costs over the next couple of years, what collection facilities need to be repaired and updated, and primarily looked really at the long-term view of the water reclamation facility and the proposed upgrades that it's going to be required to do over the next couple of years. At that meeting, the city council also set a public hearing for today, May 25th, 2021, and then directed staff to send notices of the public hearing and the proposed wastewater increase to all parcel owners within the city of Atascadero. Specifically, there were 5,436 mailed ballots to the property owners. And the proposed increases are really based upon what they're called an EDU, and that's the equivalent dwelling unit. That's by the rate of which that service charge is applied. So we rarely kind of apply it to a single-family resident. So that's one EDU. And that currently is $28.57. What staff has recommended that city council consider is increase that to $34 per month, per EDU. It's important to note that all of the different parcel owners that are hooked up to the city sewer system is based upon an EDU factor. So for example, condos pay significantly, or not simply, but certainly a lower amount of the single-family resident, while commercial properties pay a little bit more. And that's based upon that one unit of EDU compared to a single-family residence. I also include some pictures of what those service charges go towards. The first is a preliminary screening facility at the existing water reclamation facility. This facility specifically removes a number of different harmful plastics and other materials before it reaches our pond system. And then the other picture is some of our staff in the collection field, maintaining and cleaning main sewer lines throughout the city. The current proposed rate table before you is exactly what was mailed out as part of that notice, all parcel owners currently hooked up to the city's wastewater system. As you can see on that first kind of top row, that's really what we based our, what's called, again, our EDU, our single-family resident. And again, that's proposed to increase by, from $28.57 to $34. And as you go row by row, you can see how those factors come into play for those specific EDUs depending on the type of classification or use compared to that single-family resident. When we compare our wastewater rate to what we've seen in the past, we kind of look at toward what would those increases be if we applied what other cities and counties sometimes do, which is CPI. As you can see, that dark blue bar chart shows the actuals. And then that lighter peach is the CPI adjusted. And at the very edge on the right side is what's proposed. And you can see through the linear part of the graph, how that increases over time compared to CPI. If you look at what we have right now, our existing EDU rate, it's about 31% lower than what would have been for CPI. So that's about $8 and change lower than, again, what we would compare it to if we, if we increase that by CPI. So relatively speaking, we're trying to keep it lower or below our existing CPI. Conversely, if we compare what the city of Atascadero looks like, so some of our neighboring communities above and below us, you can still see that Atascadero is certainly at the bottom in terms of cost per month for our wastewater service charge. This was based upon March of 2021. Many cities and counties are going through the very similar process, reviewing their wastewater service charges, and in some cases proposing increases as well. So we certainly think these numbers are going to actually change once all those different cities and counties, should they move forward with any kind of adoption. But we certainly will continue to remain one of the lowest, more affordable wastewater service charges in the area. So I'm going to walk you, council, through the recommendations tonight. And then I'm going to turn it over to our deputy city manager and city clerk, Laura Christensen. The first recommendation is to conduct a public hearing to receive all written and verbal testimony regarding the proposed wastewater rates and consider the results protest proceedings in accordance with Proposition 218. The second recommendation is to adopt one of the following resolutions certifying the protest results. And specifically, for a non-majority protest, the draft resolution A in your packet certifies the number of valid written protests were not received from property owners representing a majority of the parcel subject to the proposed rate increase. Or B, for a majority protest, draft resolution B, certify that the number of valid written protests were received from property owners representing a majority of the parcels subject to the proposed increase. And finally, recommendation number three, if no majority protest exists, our recommendation is to adopt the draft resolution C, approving the proposed wastewater increases effective July 2021. Before I turn it over to Deputy City Manager Lauren Christensen, I want to note that how the mechanism works, including the kind of levy and how the city applies that service charge. The city goes through in preparation to this meeting, it really does a, an inventory and an audit of all the current wastewater service charges and all the property and parcel owners. And then we, that's, that's how we determine which ones are mailed to and which ones are not. What we'll do is, should council move forward with the protest, with the public hearing, this will be applied as part of the county's property tax on each one of the parcel statements that they receive. And then the city is actually in turn paid twice per year as part of those payments. So adversely compared to other cities and counties, we actually don't do a monthly service charge where traditional customers receive something in the mail. This is done once or twice a year through their property tax statement. So it's a little bit unique, but I just want to remind the council and the community on how that logistics and how that structure works. And with that, I'll turn it over to Deputy City Manager Laura Christensen.
Hi. So now it's, we'll go to the public hearing. Following the public hearing, I'll just need a few minutes to see if we've received any between now, between six o'clock and now. And then I can put them together, let you know what we've received and let you know if a majority protest exists. And then Laura, what you'll be looking for after we go through public comment, and then we come back, it will either be a motion to approve 2A, if there was, I'm sorry, 2A and C, or three, is it three or C? Or C. So basically to approve either A and C, or B, be alone if it's valid protest, correct? Yes. Okay. All right. Thank you. And I would ask, Mr. Betts, just, I like to let the public know for those that maybe haven't been following along, this has been a multi-year process. So this is something back in 2019, we looked at, and at that time, we said it's been 26, 27 years since we have raised the sewer rate. So we certainly hadn't kept pace with, you know, the cost of providing the service. And so we were clear at that time that this was going to be a multi-year process. And so we are at year three in likely a five year cycle of about a 19% increase each month. Could you, am I correct in that? And is there anything else that you would share with the public?
You are correct. So prior to the wastewater rate study being approved in May 2019, there had been a significant amount of years where the city had not chosen to increase wastewater rates. And why that may be certainly beneficial to some folks in the community, the costs of energy, infrastructure, and other costs associated with the collection and treatment of wastewater continued to grow. And so what the city did was they hired both an independent consultant to look at the long-range capital needs of our community, of additional state regulations and legislation, because that's one of the critical things we have to administer as part of our wastewater collection and treatment process, and really taking a broader look at what we call community build out as well. And so those factors really led into that wastewater study, which was done by another independent consulting firm, which really looked at what would be the best way, most fair and equitable way to apply, justifiable, and I would call it, you know, incremental increases. So the community would not, which we've seen in other cities and counties, really get hit with a large bill all at one time. So the council at that time made a decision to incrementally do these types of potential increases on a yearly basis with the community's kind of budget in mind while meeting the eventual, the current and eventual needs of the wastewater system.
Thank you very much. Nobody ever likes to raise fees, yet at the same time, we've got to cover the cost of delivering the service. And so here we are. I will look to council to see if there's any questions. We did talk about this back in March and have been talking about it for years. So we're all pretty well versed, but I will check to see if there's anything. I am not seeing any. So I'm going to go ahead and open up to public comment and seeing if there's anyone wishing to speak on this item. Mr. Cagna, I believe you wanted to speak, go ahead and raise your hand. And if there are any other members of the public, if you're on the phone, you can press star nine. So if you bring on Mr. Cagna, please.
Hello, it's me again, Charles Cagna, representing the community church of Atascadero, the president slash co-moderator for the church council. And I've been asked to deliver our protest for the Proposition 218. And granted, I understand everything that's going on. I understand all the graphs and charts and everything. It looks great. And I get it. I know it needs to be done at some point in time. I think our problem is, right now, last year, we dealt with the 25% increase, and we didn't say anything because we knew with the discussions going on over time, that eventually these things are going to happen. But with the pandemic and our small congregation, our facility rentals and fundraising projects, they're there to augment our member contributions. But because of the pandemic, we haven't even been to the property to, to exercise what we do with that property to bring in these funds, bring, that would help us keep going and meet our bills and keep the church going, et cetera. There's so many things that, that we were not able to do to the, to the shortcomings of the pandemic. And I know many people out there have had the same issues. But for the church side of things, which is what I was speaking for, we're looking at last year of $3,893 for the year. And with this 19% increase, we're going to add another $740 on top of that, bringing us to $4,633 for this year. And it's like, we had less ability to, to bring in funds last year due to the pandemic. And I just feel like it's hitting us at the wrong time. We understand and are all for making our city better and bring it up to where it should be. We love our city. Our congregation is all behind everything that needs to be done. But we also are looking at what it is we can afford for ourselves to keep our church going in the best way for our congregation. And right now, And right now, it's, last year, we had to do a paycheck protection program loan to keep us from having to let our part-timers that we have our church go. So we were able to do that and they were able to keep working for their part-time jobs. But like I said, it's 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 hitting us at the wrong time. We're coming out of this pandemic with no extra funds, no spare funds, no fundraising projects or facility rentals to keep us afloat. We're getting, we're going month to month hoping that things will, you know, slowly get better and things will come to us and help us out. And that's what we're working on. So anyways, I just wanted to deliver my concerns to you. I thank you for listening and that's our, my church's position on proposition two eighteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kanye. And I see Deborah McCrell.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, thanks for listening to me tonight. I'm Deborah McCrell and I live in Atascadero and also own single-family residential rental properties. I had a question and a comment. My question was a clarification on this is a, the wastewater is a sewer rate. So only houses that are hooked up to sewer in Atascadero, not houses on septic are affected by the rate. Is that correct?
Go ahead and ask your questions and comments and we'll all respond to them.
Oh, okay. And then my comment is, I feel like infrastructure, particularly flushing our toilets, is extremely important. And if anything, I'd like to see the sewer services expanded in Atascadero as I own properties that are both on sewer and on septic. So I am a proponent of anything we need to do to enhance the current infrastructure. That's it. Thank you very much for hearing me tonight.
Thank you, Ms. McCrell. And I will look to see if there are any other hands. Luke, do we have anyone on the phone wishing to speak on this item?
We do not.
And I'll ask for city clerk if there's anyone who has emailed in public comment on this item.
We do have one that I will read now. Okay. I am writing to oppose a portion of the planning and zoning. Oh, I'm, I apologize, it is for the next one.
Oh, okay.
Have any.
Okay, wonderful. So nothing for B one. All right. I'm not seeing any other hands raised, so I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back. So Ms. McCrell, your question corrected is only for sewer. Anyone on septic is not subject to a sewer, any sewer rates at all. And we are looking at expanding. And so there are areas, and if you have any questions about areas where your property is and what future plans are or potential is, please reach out to the city and we can talk to you about that. And Mr. Kanye, I understand, I really do. I am a bit concerned, you said a thirty-eight ninety-three for the year. And I would, please double check that and maybe connect with staff on that. Because as I'm looking at our monthly sewer services for churches, the highest monthly rate is currently eighty-five seventy-one a month. So that concerns me. I wonder what might be going on there if we're looking at the right numbers or is there an error somewhere? So let's take a look at that. The 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 other end of the spectrum is if we don't do this, then the city and every single resident who is depending on sewer is further and further behind. And, you know, going into debt in essence with what we need to do. So I I understand and I really do appreciate what you've said. And we don't, we didn't in 2019 and we don't today take this lightly. And good to know that we still have among almost the very lowest of rates in the entire county. But please do check those rates. Now I will ask our city clerk if you've had enough time to tabulate the results.
I have and a majority protest does not exist.
Okay. So I would look to my colleagues for a motion for number two A and C.
Mayor, I will move approval of resolution A and resolution C. But I did have a question for the city clerk if she could be more specific. And so the public would know as well, how many protests, written protests have been received as, as, you know, laid out in the process?
We have four valid protests received.
Okay. And to be clear, a majority protest would be in the neighborhood of.
Twenty-five hundred? Twenty-seven hundred plus.
Seven hundred, gotcha. Thank you. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
So we have a motion by council member Borbo. Council member Funk, is that a second?
I was, I have a question to pose. We can do that after the motion is seconded. I'm willing to second the motion.
All right. Motion by council member Borbo, seconded by council member Funk, and you've got a quick question.
Yes. I know that we've, because of COVID, not been able to do everything we wanted in terms of reassessing, you know, what, how, you know, the charges that go onto particular units. But in the course of that process, when we do get get to that, will we be looking at the utilization that churches actually have? Because over the course of of the long period of time that this rate structure has been in effect, attention, attendance at many of our churches is down. And the, and they're not necessarily generating the same volume of wastewater activity that, you know, that they were before. So is that something that that can get looked at in that process?
Excellent, excellent question. We will be starting the process of an additional wastewater study, hopefully this fall. And that's, we're looking at the next four to five years for that wastewater study. To the, to council member Funk's question about actual use of wastewater, and I'll make this short and sweet unless you want to elaborate any. But, you know, there are a number of different cities and counties that have access to both water and sewer actuals, if you will. Atascadero is unique, like many of you know, where we do not have direct access to that volume because it's administered by the Atascadero Water Mutual Company. That being said, we are in constant communication with them and really trying to focus in on what level of detail we can be provided to really drill down to ensure it's as equitable as possible. What we'll be definitely looking at accessing as much data as we can as part of that new study. What we'll probably end up doing is looking at volume patterns for very similar like types of uses. So that's churches, that's single-family residences, that's condos and whatnot. I also expect that categorization that was included in the presentation and in the notification to actually increase. There's a number of different uses that we're seeing just as businesses kind of grow and different uses come into the city. So we'll be looking at expanding that list to make sure we can capture as accurate as possible what those appropriate wastewater service charges are.
Thank you.
All right, we've got it first by council member Borbo, a second by council member Funk. Roll call, please.
Council member Borbo. Council member Funk.
Yes.
Council member Darius.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Newsom.
Yes.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Did you need to read that out loud by any chance?
No, these ones are resolutions.
Got it. All right. Excellent. So we are on to item number B two, title nine, chapter seventeen, cannabis activities and regulations, municipal code amendments to add non-storefront cannabis delivery services and security provisions. I will look to my colleagues to see if we have any expertise on this item. Council member Funk and council, it looks like everybody. Let's start with council member Funk.
I listened to the discussion of the planning commission on this item and I had a conversation with Nick Andre, who works in the cannabis business.
Council member Darius.
I'm not sure if it's expertise, but it's a member of the community that's considering at some point wanting to open a brick and mortar store for a dispensary. So she's a pretty significant person in the community. That was the only discussion I had.
And council member Borbo.
Yeah, I've had over time, a number of discussions with different individuals around the community. Today, I spoke with a council member from another city in our county that I mistakenly thought already did, you know, had these particular types of facilities to get some feedback from them. And I think that's it.
All right.
Well, I take that back. I did have a conversation, one of my kids at one point in time worked a few months for a delivery service in another community in Slow County, that also made deliveries into Atascadero. So we actually had some questions for him.
All right. Any others? And I had a conversation with a couple of members of the community about their interest in storefront, but not specific to this item. Those individuals actually were in favor of this. I did receive an email from a constituent that was referencing storefront and is very much against that, but that doesn't pertain to this. So this isn't necessarily expertise, but we just kind of, at the risk of not telling you everything, we want to throw it all out on the table. So with that, we'll hand it over to our community development director, Mr. Phil Dinsmore.
Thank you, mayor, and good evening, council. I'm going to just share a few points in a small presentation here and go through our recommendation this evening. Let me see if I can share my screen here. Let's see. All right. Can you see my screen there?
Yes.
All right. All right, so a little bit of background on this. In May and November of last year, we did take a look at the broader topic of cannabis and whether we should add any additional land uses. I think the direction at that time was to explore a couple of different land uses. We narrowed that down to this particular land use, which is a non-storefront retail use, which is a land use that's essentially already happening in our community. However, this would simply adjust that and allow these businesses to actually establish and set up a business location in a commercial location or city. April of this year, a planning commission did look at the suggested amendments to our code that would allow these non-storefront delivery services. And at the same time, we went through the entire code that had already been adopted in 2017 to try and update the code for any legal issues and other things that we've had in the code as this industry develops. So we sort of went through it with a fine-tooth comb, so to speak, and also utilized our legal team to do that, to really make sure we have the best code possible while still adding this particular land use. Now, right now, in our ordinance, we have a bare bones ordinance that does allow for a testing lab to establish in the city. It allows for personal cultivation, which is something that we have to accommodate in accordance with state law. And it does allow for these delivery services that are based outside of the city. Again, we didn't have the option, the state mandates that we do allow those particular activities in the city. The proposed amendment tonight simply would add this delivery business location or land use, I'll call it, to be based in the city. And what is that delivery service? What are these things? Really, a non-storefront retail delivery, which is a technical name the state gives us. They call it a type nine license. They're simply an office or warehouse type location where they base deliveries from. Customers can't go there. They are required to be in a commercial location and they have to be licensed by the state as well as approved by by the city. So under our proposal that we're looking at tonight, what would their approval process be? They would have to start out by coming into the city to ask for a conditional use permit. They would have to go for review by the planning commission. There would be public noticing. They would also have to get a state license from the state once they get approval from the city. And they would have to register to pay taxes to the city. That's the basic approval process. Through that, we would have the opportunity to provide specific conditions that are specific to their site. The proposal that you've got before you tonight does contemplate this land use in our industrial zones, our commercial professional zone, which is along Morrow Road, our retail zone, which is primarily along portions of El Camino outside of the downtown, our service commercial zone, which is a small area on the south end of the city that's in between El Camino and the freeway, and in our commercial park zone, which also has some office uses that are in the northern area of the city between El Camino and Highway one oh one. In any of these circumstances, it would be a discretionary use. In other words, it would have the conditional use permit process. Again, that would help us ensure mitigation of any potential community impacts where we could apply specific performance criteria in addition to the criteria that is already in the ordinance. So at the planning commission, it was a unique hearing because the reality of what happened is they didn't take a formal action in the end because it was a three-two vote. And it was determined on an ordinance, we need a minimum of four votes. We need a majority of the commission to take an action. So it was very similar to a tie vote where, sure, they took an action, they took a vote, it passed on a three-two, but that vote was essentially deemed invalid by the city attorney because it wasn't a four or more. So in essence, what we're carrying forward tonight is their discussion, which includes these two items, which I'll discuss in a moment. But then we have an alternative ordinance that does not include their discussion. So it's essentially, it's like a soft recommendation, but not an action that it took. But since the city council takes action on ordinance amendments, we're able to bring this forward anyway without a final action from the planning commission. So in their discussion, they did recommend two different components to be adjusted in this ordinance. And one topic was they felt that the hiring criteria might be overly restrictive to narrow the field too much to get people employed in this business. So they wanted to remove misdemeanor from the list of previous crimes. Instead, just keep it as a felony. The state is a little wider ranged, the way they describe that criteria. And so when these folks are reviewing employees, certainly we can, you know, we can have things in our code that can screen them as tightly as possible. But anyway, the commission wanted to remove that misdemeanor language. That's an item I can show you in code detail. And they also wanted to ensure that these these places had good security permissions. And as part of that, they wanted to ensure that in the case of a power outage, there's backup power source available, whether that's a generator or battery source or some other source that could power up a security features that would be on the property, such as security cameras or other features they might have for security. I also do want to point out some clarifications. I know there's been a lot of discussion in the last few days from our legal team and I think from council members and as well about some of the things in the code as compared to how the staff report was written. I think in our original recommendation to planning commission, we had talked about limiting signage. Turns out that we we can't do that as much as we'd like to. So we have to be a little more lenient on signs on the property. Our proposed code that we have tonight does not limit a sign at the business site. So they could have a sign. Typically, they don't need to have a sign because it's not going to be a customer visit location. This is simply a location where they would dispatch delivery. Another, I think some questions have come up about what a concealed location is at the business site for a delivery vehicle. Now, this recommendation actually is a good one. It came from our police chief where he's experienced these delivery businesses before in other communities. And it was suggested that any of these delivery businesses have a site that they can pull a vehicle into a garage, into a roll-up door, close that roll-up door. And so when they're dealing with goods and money and anything else, that it's happening inside that business, not outside the business, which is a really good idea. And that's not happening, obviously, when they make a delivery, but it happens where their commercial locations, when they're based out of. There was also some questions around security. And I think there's a little discrepancy in the staff report that talked about during business hours. But in the code, it does say, security twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. That doesn't mean having an armed guard there, a live pres, a person there twenty-four hours, but it does mean having some form of security that is in operation, whether that's cameras, whether that's other security features that are all the time operating. A couple of more items too, I wanted to bring up because there is a new definition now we're adding. It's called a cannabis operating license. We've been kind of going back and forth over a different entitlement process for cannabis businesses that's different than our business tax certificate. And the reason for this is we do need additional enforcement tools to be able to collect taxes from especially a delivery business. And a cannabis business tax certificate for an out-of-town delivery business, for example, may not be enough to be able to chase down code violations or our collection of tax. So it was suggested we have a separate permit process. Instead, I think our city attorney recommends we have what's called a cannabis operating license, which is a little bit different than a business tax certificate. It's actually something that we would have, we would issue this at the counter, whether or not the business requires a conditional use permit or whether it's an out-of-town vendor that doesn't require a conditional use permit. We would have an addition to their business license, a regular business license that would be a special cannabis operating license that they would sign that, we would sign that off to them and grant them this particular license. that they would sign that, we would sign that off to them and grant them this particular license to operate. We don't have a process in place for that yet. So this is something we're putting in or suggesting to put into Title IX, but we also have to update our Title III, our finance section, to add a fee and a process for that, kind of really simple definition in that Title III. That can be done if we proceed forward with these Title IX amendments. We would go and, in short order, make that amendment as well. But essentially, that would be an over-the-counter process to have that separate operating license that really beats up our enforcement opportunities. Lastly, I do want to point out some minor typos in the draft ordinance that we did find. I'm not going to go through all these right now, but I do have them on the screen available. And there were some just minor typos in terms of numbering and ordering. A lot of this ordinance, when it was originally written, it was written for one land use, and that was a testing facility. And now we've reordered this ordinance to be written for any commercial land use and made it very generic, so that over time, we can add or take away commercial land uses in this section and have them all be called a commercial cannabis activity. So there are some things that were, some changes that needed to happen from a 2017 ordinance to make that happen. And then there were some numbering things that were some anomalies. So I've got some typos on the screen. We can refer back to those, but our city clerk wanted to make sure we had those available to look at should we get into the weeds. The recommendation tonight, there is actually two draft ordinances. And as I was alluding to earlier, the first one there is the one that has the, without the recommendations from the planning commission. That's just without the, the two changes that I had mentioned. And the second one is the draft ordinance B that does include those two items that were discussed and suggested by the planning commission, which include a slight, very slight relaxation of the screening for employees and then the security regulations. But anyway, that, that is the staff's recommendation tonight. And I, as I mentioned earlier, at a later date, we will have to come back from minor amendment to Title III of the mini-code to incorporate a cannabis operating permit definition if we do proceed with these changes to add the delivery service. Of course, we always put the alternatives on the screen where we can, you know, can modify this project, we can come back if we need more information, or we can deny this particular change. But with that, I'd be happy to answer your questions tonight.
Thank you, Director. And I'm wondering if we might, I have a, bring the city attorney on for just a couple of questions and, and keep it right here on the recommendations. Mr. Perry, if you'd come on. So I had two, two questions here, just for our clarification. If we wanted to, let's say, we looked at what the planning commission recommended, and they had two recommendations that they added in. What if we wanted one of those but not the other? You know, either way, could we, is that a small enough change that it's been notified to the public that we could do that, or do we have to do one or the other or none?
You could do, you could do one. You don't have to, you don't have to pick zero or two.
Okay, that's, that's great. And then I was wondering if you could explain to us from a legal perspective, because what the planning commission had recommended was removing the misdemeanor involving moral turpitude, which sounds very legal, legal jargon. Could you tell us what a misdemeanor involving moral turpitude is?
Well, I could do that. A crime involving moral turpitude is an offense that involves either one dishonesty, such as fraud, or it is base vile or depraved conduct that is shocking to a reasonable person. The language that I just read to you comes from case law. There are no, there is no statutory definition of the words moral turpitude. But it basically would fall into one of those categories.
Okay. And so, Mr. Densmore, what the planning commission has recommended is to say, originally, we said that a business could not hire somebody that had a misdemeanor involving moral turpitude, and the planning commission, three to two, so I mean, it was sort of a stalemate maybe, but said, "we want to remove that."
But they wanted to keep in felony.
Correct.
To not misdemeanor.
And that would be a point of clarification. Is that felony involving moral turpitude, or is that felony or a misdemeanor involving moral turpitude? And I guess it's in how you punctuate, but I want to just clarify. It's felony period or just felony involving moral turpitude?
I, I could weigh in on that if you like, Phil.
Thank you, please.
The answer is that it would either be a felony involving moral turpitude or a misdemeanor involving moral turpitude. And the reason why we would recommend leaving the words or misdemeanor in there is because oftentimes, there will be an offense that will be plea bargained down from a felony to a misdemeanor. And if it's one that involves moral turpitude, that is conduct which you may choose not to want these folks that are running these businesses to have been convicted of. It's, it's, it's a crime. Either way, whether it's a felony or misdemeanor. And this one is one that would involve moral turpitude.
For you to say, right?
Well, apparently not.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I thought that was important to set the conversation. All right. So I will look to council for any questions of staff. Councilmember Derris, followed by councilmember Funk.
Thank you. Question I have on, on security, I see that, you know, I know that the planning commission talked about security cameras that would be accessible by the police department upon request. Question I have is on, on an alarm system. Is it, are we capable of having it where it would directly notify the police department? Is it necessary? Is that something, because I don't know if that was discussed or not. I don't know, I don't know if it's necessary. If it is, is it possible, do we have it? And is that something that was discussed and that we should pursue?
And that, that specificity wasn't discussed. Typically, in a private property like that, their alarm system would notify a security firm, a private security firm, and not our public police department. But it's possible that could be done. Maybe our police chief could weigh in if he's available on that particular question. We'll see if, if he knows that answer, but that's, I'm not sure.
Hello?
Oh, there he is.
How are we doing? Yeah, it would be best that, it would be best to have the alarm referred to a little alarm company instead of our dispatch, depending on how busy our dispatch is. It might be difficult to pick up that first alarm or in the event that it's canceled by a proper code given or, or call in with a password. It would just, busy our dispatch center up, it's better to have a private company managing that.
Okay, I, I kind of figured it's not, not like a bank where you might, it'll be during possibly business hours or whatnot. So I don't see anybody being endangered as the product being, at risk of being stolen. And if there's cameras, that's going to pick up whoever's there. But anyway, I just wanted to ask that. Thank you for your, for your answer, Chief.
Thank you.
Councilmember Funk.
Hey, I have a, a few items. I'm just, let me, just to clarify with regard to the, the onsite, the security plan, I wanted to confirm that the language actually in the ordinance doesn't require an onsite security guard, but allows the flexibility for a plan that the business has to present a plan that our, our planning commission can, you know, consider as sufficient.
That is correct. That is, that is the intent. And I can take a look at that language to make sure it's written that way, so it's easily understood. But that is the intent, that it's, they have a security plan in place and not a security guard in place all the time.
Okay. And to clarify that the backup power source could include a, a battery, like if you get a solar system, the Tesla battery or something, that, that kind of thing, as opposed to necessarily a generator?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. And then back to the, the delivery. On page 92 in the, in one of the versions of the proposed ordinance, this, this language is there in both ordinances. At the very bottom on item 16, where it talks about that the city shall include is concealed, that the, the facility has to include a concealed location within the building where all cannabis products and cash are loaded or unloaded onto a delivery vehicle. And this is actually a, a city attorney question. Can we amend that language tonight with the, with, adjust the prepositions so that we specify that it is loaded from or onto a delivery vehicle? So that we allow for, so that the, the language that we have ensures that the, what's the most risky part of this? So, you know, the, the distributor's truck bringing, that might have products for several locations coming in to deliver products to the location, that that would occur behind closed doors.
Well, I understood your question to be about adding the words loaded onto or unloaded from a delivery vehicle and whether it was permissible to add that language, and the answer is yes.
Okay. Good. And then with regard to the, the language about misdemeanor versus felony and the, as I listened to the planning commission, I, I didn't hear them being necessarily encouraging of moral turpitude. But what I did hear, hear was a concern that there, that the challenge in this business is that there are a lot of folks who have, have great interest in it, in it, who may have some legal history behind them from the, from a period of time when cannabis wasn't legal for uses, things that are activities that are, that are currently legal. So if, does the, the, does removal of the phrase or misdemeanor as proposed by the planning commission in the clause that involves moral turpitude? Does that make any difference to the ability to make sure that folks who might have, say, a misdemeanor conviction for possession of marijuana for personal use, that they, you know, sometime in their past, that that would not preclude them from currently being an employee in this facility?
I can take that one, Phil. The answer is that if they were convicted of possession, that, that would not be a crime of moral turpitude. So, okay, conviction for possession would not disqualify them from serving as an employee.
Or no. And does the language that is, that remains that says, or any crime involving the sale, possession of sale, for sale, manufacture, transportation, cultivation, or distribution of controlled substance? Does that language prohibit the organization from hiring somebody who might have had a prior conviction for possession, but not, not be in the business of selling it?
No. It clearly says, I'll read it slowly, sale, possession for sale, manufacture, transportation, cultivation, or distribution of a controlled substance. So mere possession would not fall within that list.
Okay, so we may not need that language to achieve the objective that they were after.
Well, the language that is there now is needed to disqualify people that have been convicted of crimes that are falling into those categories.
Right. But, but to achieve the objective of allowing persons with minor legal history related to cannabis, in particular, to be involved in these businesses, the, is not being achieved by deleting or misdemeanor, but, but is achieved by the language as it is.
What this language would allow is that somebody who's been convicted of possession only and not possession for sale, they would not be disqualified.
Okay. And this is more restrictive than the state law in under the professions, Business and Professions Code. Is that correct?
Well, let me check. State law does allow the state to deny licenses to applicants that have been convicted of an offense that is substantially related to the qualifications, functions, or duties of the business or profession for which the application is made. The city has the authority to identify those offenses which it believes should disqualify someone from owning or, or, or working at one of these establishments. And that is what the code has, this ordinance says it's been presented to, does. The city may be more restrictive than state law requires. And that may be different here, but I can tell you that this is within your authority to make that determination of whether or not these are the basis that you want to use to disqualify somebody from owning or working at one of these establishments.
Okay, thank you. And then last question. This is about, this is back for Phil. This is about doors. We're, we're envisioning something that, that is probably accomplished by a roll-down door that is, you know, in a doorway that's tall enough to accom- accommodate both vehicles delivering from the facility and vehicles delivering into the facility. You know, this is not a business that involves 18-wheelers, as I understand it. But are, in the, are we going to have any problem accommodating that kind of a door in most of our land, in the zoning areas that are specified under the code?
There are a lot of locations that have small business locations with the roll-up doors. But I will tell you that that business type or that building type is probably one of the highest demand building types in the city right now at this juncture. We have a lot of startup businesses that love the roll-up door. There's a lot of even quasi-retail businesses that like that. In fact, I just talked to a tile shop yesterday. It was looking for exactly the same thing, and I can't find it. So it, it's going to become scarce, but there's certainly a lot of that type of building type in all of the zoning districts that are on the table. Certainly, it's a little more difficult than finding an office space or a retail space that doesn't have that. So it's going to, it's going to definitely narrow the field in terms of availability. Buildings can easily be modified for that. We certainly are, what we're talking about is a roll-up door that can accommodate a regular passenger vehicle. So you're talking about a 10-foot-wide roll-up door that has an eight-foot head height to it.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Any other council questions? Council, Mayor Tom Newsom.
Joyce of unmuting and juggling something. Um, on the information, additional, additional information that was provided to council, it listed that the other is that further down in the ordinance, it does allow for a process where the police chief can waive these requirements or restrictions with regard to a particular owner or employee. Where is that in the ordinance?
Hmm.
I haven't located it.
You found that in the attachment that was given to you from the state description of?
Yeah, the additional information we requested on the proposed language. And how does the police chief feel about that?
Yeah, I need, I'm not sure where that is in your additional.
Okay, so what we're.
It's in your agenda packet or was it emailed?
It was in the email, not the agenda packet. And what I was trying to do is determine that if there were certain cases, as, as someone's applying for applications and licensure, that, that if we leave some of the language a little bit vague, we don't put in misdemeanor, how are we to determine if there's something that we're overlooking or that the police chief can have that additional restriction or process of eval in the ordinance? So I want to make sure that's in there.
Okay, I see what you're saying. All right. Well, I, I'll just go back to what they need these. It is a conditional use permit, and we would be involving our police chief and our police department with every single one of these if we get one in and it'd be part of that process. And we have full discretion above and beyond anything that's in the code. We definitely like to use the code for guidance when we do that.
Okay, and then the other question, sorry.
Go ahead.
The, the other question that I have is, nowhere in this ordinance, does it address any? The other the other question that I have is nowhere in this ordinance, does it address any of that? The handling of the money is the vaults, the safes, that additional stuff in there. It just does list in here the handling of cash and making sure that that's done in a secure location. Was that something the planning commission looked at since it is a ca- cash heavy industry?
We do have the opportunity to get into that level of detail. Typically that level of detail in terms of internal business operation may or may not be something we'd get into. Back to your first question, as I look back at the code, the way it is now under our, in fact, this is on page one oh four under the commercial cannabis application of or approval or denial of entitlement, there are many of those particular what I'll call performance standards that I think relate to what you were asking about in terms of that additional material.
The only reason why I bring that up is as in other jurisdictions, one of the criteria can be any affiliation with gangs. Any other curricular activity of anybody that requests a license is an employee. It comes to kind of the background and the interactions of those that run the operation. And so allowing the police chief to be able to have that discretion, he's obviously going to know if there's some a gang affiliation, city's not making sure that we have that in place.
Literally.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that 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 was covered that the police chief has the final say if there's any other dealings with that. And then on the safes, you know, it's it's hard to have a banking institution. I know a lot of banks require an armored car. You're not going to have an armored car with a cannabis operation. You're going to have that being handled internally. Some of the cities and other jurisdictions have made sure that there were certain vaults and safes and some things that were put in place similar to banking institutions so that when there is a robbery or a break in that there are steps that are evaluated. I don't know if that's something that you want the city to put in the ordinance, but also is going to lead to having additional crime, having our police department being busy, having to worry about some other logistics. If we do not require twenty four seven security, alarm system is not going to help. It's going to be a first notification. Some people response time might not be, they might be tied up with something else, but not having a twenty four seven actual physical security there and there is a breach and we do have a safe for whatever it is, the damages that are going to be done or whatever else is being housed in there along with all of the products could be of an issue or concern.
So I think what you're saying, Director, is that if there's nothing in there specifically, that's something the planning commission would look at in terms of what is the actual security, the safety, you know, potential vaults, things like that.
I think that 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 type of detail is difficult to put into a code because it's a constantly evolving market. It's a constantly evolving business and it may be a matter of time before this business is no longer a cash business. That's what the hope would be at some point is that it gradually evolves into other types of payment. And that's the hope because it's going to make things a lot easier for all of us. But the items that are in the performance standards that I mentioned on page one oh four do allow us to go a lot of different directions in those levels of detail through use permit. There's a lot of guidance on all of the security features, but if you start putting in things that are extremely detailed at this level, any ordinance level, it can be problematic down the line. We do have full discretion to get to that level when we understand the nature of the business, where the business located, the building they'll be in and what they're doing in terms of volume of sales and how much cash they intend to handle in all of those things. Typically, the delivery businesses are much, much smaller in scale than the the actual retail businesses. Now, a lot of the retail businesses that we have in our other communities, they also do delivery. And when they do both and they have a full retail and full delivery business, there's a lot of volume of product and cash. And it's a very significant situation and those issues are very, very important. But we also do have to say that in this ordinance, it is being set up so you can add land uses. So these security provisions could also be applied, for example, ten years from now, if you decided to do full retail to that. So I suppose you need to think about all those things with this ordinance. It's not just being applied to delivery. But again, there's enough flexibility in here to where you
Yeah, Director, it sounds like the nine seventeen point zero zero eight that we've been looking at, number five would cover that, that all reasonable measures have been incorporated into the operations plan and site plan or consistently taken successfully control and or prevent disturbances, vandalism, traffic crimes, et cetera.
Exactly.
I just have one more question on that. So the ordinance, if we don't address it in the ordinance, who determines operations and who over? Who puts it? Is it in the application process? Then ask them what they have in place.
So for example, if we get an application for one of these businesses before we bring that forward to the planning commission, we would need to make sure that we have all the information and we feel competent as a city that they can demonstrate compliance in all of these areas. Then we bring their plan forward to the planning commission with those details to determine if we can make these findings, if we can make these performance standards. And we'd spell out those details of their business plan and their security plan and all of their provisions. And that's that's really that's our opportunity to nail down everything along those lines.
This industry is supposedly only cash. My banking institution does not allow me to take money from cannabis businesses and deposit it in my business. I my business practices is I don't deal with anybody in the cannabis industry. So it is cash inducing. There is a challenge with putting anything through a credit card system and actually into a bank that runs with cannabis. I'm sure Grover Scott it handled. But in some of the metropolitan areas that have implemented cannabis, they've had a huge issue with crime in the volume of cash and what's being controlled. So as we open up the door and it's already happening here with the deliveries, I just want to make sure that we have things in place that we're not overburdening our our law enforcement with trying to do go into clients with us and just making sure that there's something in writing, whether it's application process, sounds like that's where it's going to be, not the ordinance. I'm good with that. As long as that we're addressing all of these additional issues. And if it does, as we've done with other industries gets overburdens and perhaps we reevaluate in six months, nine months to see where we're at and do a performance evaluation on it. And I say CUP, all of that, you know, making sure that first one out that we are reevaluating and making sure that we have addressed everything.
That's a very, very good point. In fact, most of these cases where we do issue a use permit, it's going to require an annual review every year of the use permit. How's their business operating? How's it working? Are we able to collect tax payments? Are we having security issues? Are we having community impacts? So those provisions are built into every one of these use permits. I think it's it's critical and with a new land use like this to do that. And that's what all of our other communities are doing. They have annual annual reviews required for these conditional use permits to be sure that everything is working.
I see our city attorney
Okay, thank you.
I was wondering if there was something that in the conversation that you wanted to add?
Sparked his interest.
Oh, yes, I have something of interest, but I didn't want to interrupt the flow until there was a pause. So thank you for the opportunity to answer a question that was asked by Councilmember Newsom. The question was where in the ordinance does it say that the police chief may consider a request with regards to a particular owner on the ground that such person's involvement with the facility will not pose a threat to public safety? The answer is on page one oh six of your packet and the code section is nine dash seventeen zero zero nine A nine and small V. It's towards the top of that page. So third paragraph talks about commercial cannabis activity permitted may be submitted to the police chief for written waiver, et cetera.
Thank you.
Ah, thank you.
So in that case, if we kept in a misdemeanor of moral turpitude and an owner wanted to appeal that, they could appeal that to the police chief. The police chiefs can look and say, yeah, this does not rise to the level of having concern and go ahead and allow that individual to volunteer, work here, whatever, or you know, of course, deny it.
The hollow you just said is correct. Technically, it's not an appeal. It's a request for a waiver. So that could view it as an appeal because the initial decision would have been you're disqualified because of this conviction you had. And then what would happen is the person who was affected could go to the police chief. Presumably, there would be, I would think, a form of some sort that the person would have to complete requesting the waiver, then the police chief, as it indicates here in his or her unfettered discretion can grant or deny the request.
Thank you. Councilmember Borbo, do you have some questions?
Yes, thank you. Um, yeah, actually, I was going to point that out. Let me go back to the beginning though. I hate to rehash some ground here, but regarding Councilmember Funks' questions on this language of misdemeanors, moral turpitude, that sort of thing. I also listened to the planning commission deliberations on this night. And I think the entire premise was, hey, people who've had convictions relative to cannabis in the past. So we've talked about possession and the city attorneys pointed out that possession alone is not a crime of moral turpitude, wouldn't wouldn't fall into this category to preclude somebody doing it. I'm not familiar with, you know, the degree of cannabis related violations of law. So if somebody, you know, had in their past been, you know, had sold small amounts of cannabis to their friends, is there such a thing as misdemeanor possession with intent to sell or, you know, misdemeanor selling versus or is selling always been a felony in the past?
You know, I don't prosecute for criminal activity either, but I can tell you just my knowledge of the general law is that that it is most likely that there could be a felony or a misdemeanor. It depends. I do know this much that a misdemeanor is defined as a penalty where the fine is is a thousand dollars or less or jail term is a year or less. So I would say that there's a good likelihood that there could be a misdemeanor possession for sale. But to avoid even any question about it, the language that you see before you says crime involving sale possession for sale, whether that is a misdemeanor or a felony. And as I just noted, if there was some circumstance where it was a minor amount and it was a misdemeanor, whether or not that would be one that the police chief would consider for a waiver. That's why that language is in there to allow on a case by case basis, a determination of whether there should or shouldn't be a waiver. So if the facts are as you described them and it's relatively minor and the police chief agrees and thinks that the person should receive a waiver, then the police chief's discretion, that could be granted.
All right, thank you. And Phil, on the slides, you, if you could go back a few slides to where you mentioned the security stuff. You, I was a little confused between what I saw on the slide between, let's see, it's not, okay, now that one, security to be twenty four seven does not have to be staffed. In the staff report on the top of page seventy seven, it specifically states, some of the suggested security provisions include security cameras, it can be accessed by PD, enclosed area for delivery and pickup, as we've discussed, an onsite security guard during all business hours. But in your discussion, you indicated that it was not intended to say you'd have a a physical security guard during that timeframe, just that the the cameras or some security feature be operational twenty four seven. I want to clarify that because like I said, I was a little confused based on what it says in the staff report. And then I think in the language, it says the conditional use permit may require twenty four seven security presence. What was your intention there as you explained this slide?
Thank you for that. Actually, I'd like to clarify that. The intent is not to have a staff there overnight on a delivery type business. Instead, the intent is to have adequate security twenty four hours a day. And I think for that to be at the discretion of the city, the police chief through that conditionally from permit process as to the scope and scale of that security. But to mandate that a secure a live security guard be on one of these sites was not the intent.
Okay, and during business hours, it it is an intent by use of the word may require? You know, what is the intent for?
The intent is that they need security, but not a guard necessarily. They need a good security system that's going to be adequate based on their business type.
Okay, and
We're not saying that they need a security guard during business hours or they need a security guard at night. They need a security plan twenty four hours a day, seven days a week, that is going to be adequate for their business.
Okay, and so through the CUP process, you know, we're going to determine whether you know, if their plan is adequate, that would be, I guess, in conjunction with you, the chief reviewing it prior to getting to the planning commission?
Correct. So if they're going to do a ten thousand square foot warehouse and they're going to be delivering to five different counties and they're going to have you know, five million dollars of product, we're probably going to want a security guard. But if they're having, you know, a two hundred square foot office with a tiny roll up door and they're only delivering to a Tascadero and their volume is X number of dollars, it might be different. So I think we need to basically evaluate based on the scope of the business.
Okay, I think that's a very good answer because my you know, per understanding has been that typically these delivery only services in the county are more like the latter that you described. You know, they're they're very small hole in the wall businesses behind a roll up door. And you know, they're they're pretty low low staffed operation.
Yeah.
But
Uh-oh.
But I think, I mean, you made a good point about, yeah, what if you had a much larger one, you you might want to have additional security. But I don't know if you're familiar with what's occurred in other communities about what the typical size is, but I would guess it's more the latter description you gave?
Yes, that's what I'm seeing. There's, I think, eight businesses that deliver into a Tascadero right now and they appear to be very small locations.
Okay, um, and then I don't believe you mentioned this in the slides, but in the staff report also on page seventy seven, you talk you mentioned, in addition to CUP process, will will also be subject to the following, a community benefit agreement and annual review and permit fee. You've talked about the annual review and permit fee and why you think that's necessary. But then it says community benefit agreement may include a program or compensation to be given to a community, community to mitigate potential impacts of a commercial cannabis business. I'm, you know, again caught between the will and the may and wondering this community benefited agreement concept. I mean, I'm familiar with it, but I mean, we don't require such a thing for liquor stores, places that sell cigarettes, pharmacies that distribute opiates, other things like that. What is the premise and and going between the will and the may, what's gonna, what would be the driver between saying, hey, you've got to give some money back to the community in some way, shape, or form?
Typically, those are utilized when you have a full retail business that's open to the public to visit the store. Typically, what will happen is if a city entertains retail for retail, they get into a beauty contest situation because they only want to allow one or two for their community based on the capacity. And in that scenario, I think what happens to that use permit process is these communities ask these retailers, all right, what are you going to bring to the table to mitigate the impacts of us having a business in our community? And the added security and police and issues we might have because of that. That typically, that community benefit agreement typically is not associated with a delivery business that's not open to the public. But we did put that in the report because we did want to add that, you know, as a comment to our ordinance that that may be required through discretionary approval process. If there's a very unusual large a delivery service or in the future, if there is a retail cannabis store that could be a condition of approval through that discretionary that could be a condition of approval through that discretionary review process, but it's not part of the ordinance that's recommended at this particular time, worthy of mentioning.
You, you've mentioned here, and I think in a previous comment, that, that, you know, some of this, because we were changing the language to ordinance, which previously addressed only testing facilities to allow this, and just call them facilities, cannabis facilities, because somewhere down the road, we might authorize additional types. But if we were to do that, I'm sure we would, the council would revisit this entire ordinance if it, if it reached the point of adding additional types of cannabis facilities, right?
Obviously, we'd have the opportunity to revisit the whole ordinance because we would have to make another amendment to it. But the idea is that now, at this point, I think the ordinance is brought up to a level where it could accommodate other land uses without having to have substantial changes to it.
Right, okay, thank you. And then, um, the, I was on the zoning table, let me see where this is. I was a little well, I'm curious about the places where we're looking to authorize it. You listed the types of zones in your slides. I didn't see a couple of the ones that I see on the chart. So like on page 102, if I'm reading the chart correctly, that is, but on page 102, on the top, there's a table, commercial cannabis use table, permitted uses by zone, so it lists all these different zones. And then says, "Testing facilities could be authorized in these zones by conditional or administrative use permit." And then retail non-front, non-storefront facility, which we're talking about this evening, would be authorized as a CUP, and we say in CP, which I believe is Commercial Park.
Yeah, that's, that's Commercial Professional.
Our Commercial Retail, CS, Commercial Service. Commercial Professional, CPK is Commercial Park, right?
Yes.
The one that confused me is DO, if I'm not mistaken, that's Downtown Office, is that correct?
That's right. That's not the downtown zone. I think that's right. I left that out of my description on the slide in the PowerPoint. So downtown office zone is the zone that is Hotel Park that's over across from the library.
Okay, so in what? We, I mean, that is part of our recognized downtown area, but I guess the more, that's the only place where there's DO zoning, and there was, there's no DO zoning on Entrada or Palma or?
No, that's all, that's all DC zone. The only DO zone that we have in the city is that office district that's, that's part of Hotel Park. And that particular location doesn't really accommodate any location for roll-up doors, so it's probably not going to work there anyway.
Exactly, that was my concern, because I, I mean, I picture this as being much more suited in the industrial area.
Sure.
In the industry.
CPK or the CP zone or industrial really is going to be where the targeted zones are.
Yeah, I'm not even sure about its appropriateness for like, commercial retail. But I was concerned about the DO, anything considered downtown zoning. Alright, yeah, thank you, and let me see. The fees for this and the fees for the annual review, because these are, you know, taking a little more review, I'd say, than another business type coming in the door and asking for a business license tax certificate. Have we established, have you looked at a level, a fee level for this? Because I didn't realize it'd take a little more time, but, you know, I don't think it's proper to set an exorbitant fee or exorbitant requirements. It simply really just says, yeah, we don't really want you, you know, we're changing the code, but we don't really want you around. But do you have any idea what kind of fee we're, we're talking about for?
That's gonna take, that's gonna take a little more analysis to determine the amount of staff time it would take to process one of these particular annual cannabis operating licenses. Our fee for the conditional use permit would be the same as we have in our chart today for a conditional use permit, but the cannabis operating license would have a fee established for it, and it would be an annual fee. And it would be a fee to start that license as well. That is the fee where we need some additional information and analysis, and that is the item that would come back to you with that amendment to Title III of our code.
Okay, alright, I think that's all I had for now, so thank you, thank you, good answers.
Director, I'd say most of my questions have been answered, but what Councilmember Borbo brought up with the zoning. So I realize this is considered retail, non-storefront facility, so it is allowed in commercial retail, as is testing facility. And I know we all approved this years ago, but now that you're looking back at it, you're like, remind me of, where are the commercial retail areas? Are there any areas where you wouldn't want a non-storefront to be? I mean, we've had some, you know, we have a couple in the downtown that, of course, non-conforming, that aren't storefronts, and it's not, you know, it doesn't bode well for downtown, and I realize this doesn't go in downtown, but are there any commercial retail spaces where we could be setting up something that we're gonna kind of bite us later?
It's very possible, and that's why we have the conditional use permit process. So for example, you know, our prime retail zone is the Von Shopping Center, Adobe Plaza, Virginia Plaza, some of these areas where they obviously have all these storefronts. For one thing, they're not going to be able to find a location there that's going to work because of the roll-up door. But we also have these other retail locations right now in the south end of the city, for example, where we have some very kind of, almost look like industrial land uses that are there with roll-up doors and automotive-oriented uses. And you would think they were zoned industrial, but they're actually part of our retail zone. And that's where we can use our discretionary conditional use permit process to determine, hey, is this the kind of zone it should, this is the kind of area it should go in. Or we have the discretion to take the retail zone off the table and just, you know, direct this land use to the CPK. The industrial zones or the service commercial zone, which is kind of a more intensive commercial zone. I'm not sure.
Essentially, after we do the general plan update, and there could be some changes in zoning, who knows what that could, could lead to. But I think I would be a little concerned because I think sometimes what happens at planning commission, you have conditional use permit, and there's kind of just the assumption that it's, they forget the conditional, and just like, well, it's allowed. And, and so my concern is that we could kind of end up with, we don't want to have non-storefront in, say, the Von Shopping Center or something like that. We want to make sure where we want storefront, we keep that storefront. And granted, we say there's no room for roll-up doors and things like that right now, but I just want to set us up right with our, you know, with our current code as we have it, that we don't end up with a non-storefront in a place that starts to, you know, look like a non-retail area.
I think that's a really good point, and I think if we wanted to change the recommended list of zones where this is allowed, I think I have a question for our city attorney too, just to open that door. As if the council wanted to, to change that, is that something that we would have to go back? Or could we do that tonight, Brian? Just out of curiosity.
What is the change that we're?
So if, for example, the council decided to say, you know what, we'd like to take the CR zone off the table for this conditional use in this proposed ordinance. We've got, you know, one, two, three, four, five, six different zones that are proposed by staff or, in this particular case. What if we did that in this draft? Can they make an amendment like that?
Yes. Under the law, you don't even have to allow these uses in any zones. So you can select which zones you want to allow them in, so if they want to remove one of these zones, they can do that.
Great.
Thank you. Councilmember Darris.
Yeah, thank you. Mayor Moreno brought up a good point, when you were talking about the different facility types and the roll-up doors and what we're doing, the discussion you're having there. And it occurred to me that putting retail and non-storefront facilities under the same category, should we, should we separate that out? Because they will be functioning differently because the, the, the non-storefront will require a roll-up door. So it would seem to me, just adding another line and having non-storefront versus storefront or retail being two separate lines, because a store, because a storefront type of facility may be okay to have in the downtown commercial area, may or may not be, but certainly you're not going to be able to have the delivery service there because you won't have a roll-up door.
But currently, we're not, we're not talking about retail storefront.
No, I know.
Is retail, non-storefront.
Right, but they're in the same category, so I'm wondering, should they be on to, should they be their own standalone? You know, you got?
Oh, I think, I think what you're getting hung up on is the, the definition that the state gave us. The state, the state gives it a definition of non-storefront retail, and we, we?
Oh, I thought that was two things. I thought that was including.
No, it's all one thing. Yeah, it's confusing. It's a retail business without a storefront. That's what the, that's what the state calls it.
Okay, then I misunderstood, because I thought that was
Yeah.
Two different types of facilities, okay.
Alright, any other, any other questions before we go to Councilmember Borbo?
Well, it's probably more of a comment, but I mean, I guess, you know, we can determine that cannabis or not, a non-storefront use is not compatible with commercial retail.
Yes, exactly my point, yes.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. My definition, it's, it's not a place that customers walk into, whether we're talking, you know, cannabis or auto parts. If it's, you know, if it's a delivery-only business, it doesn't seem to me that it's fits with the, with the definition of commercial retail.
And where that came from, when we first put that in there, it was prior to a police chief comment about a roll-up door. And originally, the thought was, okay, there's a lot of two- and three-story buildings in our retail zones with offices upstairs. And that might be the location for this kind of a land use, but then when the police chief did recommend the roll-up doors, we didn't pull that out of that zoning district. So that's just the little history and backup as to how that ended up as a CR potential use.
It's even harder to drive into the third floor.
Yes, exactly.
Alright, have we exhausted our questions? Then can we go to the public? Alright, great. So we will open up to public comment, and if you would like to speak on this item, you can go ahead and raise your hand. If you're on the phone, you can press star nine, and while I'm waiting for that, I will ask our city clerk if we've had any email comments to be read into the record tonight. We have not. Okay, Luke, are we having anyone on the phone that's wishing to speak?
We do not.
Alright, I'm going to give a last chance if there's anybody on the webinar. There we go, Deborah McCrell, you are up.
Hello, good evening again. I have a few questions for you. I wanted to first start with, for an application, an applicant for this, the owner, if there's any limitation to their residence as far as a Tascadaro, Famos County, like some of the current businesses, or is it allowed that any corporation can come in from a big city and potentially set up what you had alluded to, which we don't expect, which would be a high-volume business that would serve multiple counties? That's the first part of the question. The second part is, it sounds like commercial, so is that including recreational and is not limited to medical use as some delivery services are? Is there any distinction? And that concludes my question. Thank you for hearing me.
A sure thing. Thank you, Ms. McCrell. And I will look and see if there are any other hands, any other, any other of our attendees that would like to speak on this item. Seeing none, I will close public comment, and we will bring that back, and I will let Director Dunsmore answer those questions.
There are no provisions in the draft ordinance that would limit residency for setting up a business in our city. And the other question was on the, sorry, what was the other?
Well, and I can answer that. It is for, there is no distinction between the recreational and medical. The delivery would be, just like currently, any business can deliver into a Tascadaro. They just don't have their delivery warehouse or operations set up here. So currently, deliveries can be made for just cannabis across the board, no distinction between the two, and any delivery service that now set up residence or business in a Tascadaro can be either. It's not, there's not a distinction, so I think that answers Ms. McCrell's question.
That's right.
On that line, I mean, I know sometimes we look at that with housing as well. You know, is there an ability to, you know, keep houses for, especially, like, say, we're looking at the, you know, the micro homes, can that be for, for locals before it goes out? Is there ever anything, just out of curiosity, that can be done to say, you know, hey, we would want someone local? Or does that not, is that not, are we not legally allowed to do that? Just curious.
That's a great legal question for Brian.
I'm sorry, could you restate the question, please?
Yeah, so our, our member of the public had asked about, you know, is there a limit on somebody coming to do business here in a cannabis business that they would have to, say, either live in a Tascadaro or have residence in a county versus, you know, somebody coming in from out of the area? And we said there is no limit, but I was just curious, is that ever an option? Not that I'm promoting that tonight, but I'm curious if that is something that this council or any other council could do.
To my, to my knowledge, the answer to that is no. You could not restrict someone who lives out of Tascadaro from doing business in a Tascadaro.
That's, that's what I thought. I'm no attorney, but that was my, that was my guess. Thank you.
Good guess.
So as I'm bringing this, as we bring this back, I want to focus on a couple of, or a few items. We have, of course, Councilmember Funk changing that wording, makes sure we have loaded on to or unloaded from, so there's that clarification. Looking at the idea of removing commercial retail, how does, how does council feel about that? We good? Got something? Can I get thumbs up from folks? Removing commercial retail from the list of permitted uses by zone.
Yes, but I would also ask that we remove DO.
Facilities too, yes. Yeah. Oh, did you say testing facilities, or did you say DO?
I said to remove, you know, DO, the downtown office.
I would agree with that as well.
They're kind of included by their physical.
Thumbs up on DO. Well, and they're right by the library, so I don't see that being a good spot. Do we have Mark Heather? Yes, thumbs up, we're good, alright.
But the testing facilities also, I mean, that's not really a retail walk-in type of business. That should be removed from.
Yes, move, remove that from CR as well, I think. Because again, we don't want to have any kind of non-storefront business in a retail, you know, where you're supposed to have those storefronts. And I believe we could do that because we don't have current testing facilities, so we're not hurting any current businesses by doing that, by, and making them non-conforming. I, I would like to propose that we keep the misdemeanor with moral perpetude because just removing misdemeanor, it's not just misdemeanor on its own, it's misdemeanor of moral perpetu- perpetude? Cannot say that well. Perpetude, I would like to keep that in there because I think, based upon a lot of the questions we've heard tonight, it doesn't prohibit somebody who, say, has a minor misdemeanor from having possession and can always be asked the police chief for a waiver. So I'd like to keep that in because based upon our city attorney's advice, it seems like that's probably a smart idea to do. How does my, how do my colleagues feel on that front? You good on that? Okay.
Yeah, I am. I, I think that, that I don't see that, that language as accomplishing what they actually had in mind, so.
I agree.
And, and as long as the chief has the ability to grant a waiver upon request, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, so those were the things that I've really written down, that we were, that seemed like we wanted to change. I think the planning commission adding in the, the backup system for security, I think, is a good idea. Everybody, are we, are we good on that? Any questions or concerns?
I do have a question. Thank you for bringing that up because that's a question I forgot to ask. I am concerned about imposing the cost of a generator. You know, a battery was mentioned. I'm, I'm assuming that, you know, you can buy cameras, you know, surveillance camera systems that in and of themselves have some sort of battery backup to cover a, a certain period, let's say. Because, I mean, I don't, I don't, you know, believe in imposing a requirement, somebody buy a, you know, $5,000 generator. But I'm okay with saying, you know, your camera's got to be able to, you know, function for six hours without power or something. But I, I don't, I don't like the actual requirement for, for a generator. But some degree of reasonable backup power, it seems okay.
So Director Dunsmore, could you address, yeah, Councilmember Borbo's concern and question?
The intent of the code is to have a backup power source, whether that The intent of the code is to have a backup power source, whether that be battery or generator. So it's left flexible in the way the language was written and that's the intent.
Okay. I think if that's the case, that's probably something we all, and I'm assuming the business owner would think is a good idea as well. So those were the things. Anything else that anyone wanted to bring up? Are we ready to craft a motion? Council member Funk?
I'm ready to craft a motion if.
Great. Let's go for it.
Um, I would propose that we adopt draft resolution B with the following three changes. One, to restore the phrase or misdemeanor. And if you, you, you don't need me to, to say exactly what it is, or I think we know what that is.
I, I think if our city clerk is unclear, she'll let us know. So if you could be on, on board here and let us know if we're needing to tighten up our language.
Okay. And second, to insert the phrase or unloaded from in section nine, seventeen, oh, oh, nine, part sixteen, which is about the, the delivery vehicle. And third, to eliminate the categories DO and CR from the allowed, you know, the, the CUP would not be allowed, even with CUP, but those were zones that would not be allowed in for either testing or uh, non-storefront retail.
Excellent. I will ask our city clerk, is that clear based upon our conversation? Is that clear direction for where we're going?
It is. And then, um, the typos, are you going to approve them with each, the typos? Perfect.
Yeah, I would happily add that to the motion to correct the typos as indicated by staff.
Thank you. Good job. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion by council member Funk, a second by council member Dara's. Roll call, please.
Council member Funk?
Yes.
Council member Dara's?
Yes.
Council member Borbo?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
So you'll need to announce to the outcome unanimously vote?
I need to re, oh, I also need to read the title of the ordinance really quick. So draft ordinance B, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Atascadero, California, amending the Atascadero municipal code title nine, chapter seventeen, cannabis activities and regulations, and determining this ordinance is exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act. Motion passes five oh.
Wonderful. Thank you. And I jumped the gun a little bit there, Ricky Lara. I threw you off. All right, let's, uh, it is seven fifty-nine. We've got one more fair-sized item on our agenda. We have gone through it already, so it probably won't take as long as it did the first time. That's my hope, uh, because we also need to go back in a closed session. So why don't we take a brief, uh, let's come back at ten past, at eight, ten, give a, give our legs, legs a stretch and we'll see you back.
Great.
Super cute.
She's dying to see everybody. She's like, share.
That's definitely the cutest backdrop of any of our, uh.
What you didn't miss earlier, I don't know what was on, but she came out of her bedroom with a beanie on and these glasses on upside down. Here, show. It was running around looking for her dad. She makes me laugh. She also makes me cry. You remember those days, Charles, don't you? Those baby days. You're so tired. She gave me her cold too, Rick, for her trips. Really? Come on. Stop sharing.
She is talking so much more.
I know. She talks some whole sentences.
Yeah.
She asked my assistant yesterday where her business cards were, because she's been out of school for two days. Asked her where her cards were and she said, I don't have any. And she goes, but why? I guess having business cards is a sign of, uh, you know, working. I don't know. It's so funny, the things they think of.
All right, Mark, are you? There we are. All right. So, uh, Luke, let's go ahead and get us going again.
All right, we're set.
All right. Thank you. So we just came back from a, a brief break and now we are on to item B three, which is title nine, planning and zone text amendments. This is our annual code update. Now, I'll start with any expertise we may have had. I'll look around camera scene. Okay, no expertise as well. And so I will hand this over to our community development director, Mr. Phil Dunsmore. You're muted, Phil. Okay.
They're trying to find the unmute button. It was just hidden from me. Uh, just trying to make sure you can see my screen there. All right. Well, these are some topics that we've already previewed. We looked at these topics back in February this year. We brought them to the planning commission on May fourth. The planning commission voted unanimously to recommend the zoning text amendments. This is part of an annual review where we go through the zoning. Uh, we find inconsistencies, we find ways to streamline the code, but we also find ways to implement the general plan. And so essentially tonight, there's three different topic areas, a whole series of amendments that I'll go through and just give you a brief update on. But essentially there's three topic areas. There's several amendments that came out of our housing element implementation, our housing element adoption. And so we're suggesting the implementation of several, several of those crucial, uh, components into the zoning. Uh, there's some development standards to help us streamline our processing. And then there's just the inconsistencies and the other cleanup. So let's just start right in on it, right off the top. One of the things that came out of our housing element uh, was the agricultural uses that we have in our, our zones. When I say our zones, I mean, all of our residential zones, but primarily our, our residential suburban zone, which is our west side, which is known for ag uses, which is part of our culture. It's part of our community, not something that's ever going to go away. But we have to redefine it because if we don't redefine it, HCD, the state, basically, essentially anywhere we allow commercial agricultural uses, they require that we allow by right housing for farm workers. That's essentially a higher density housing in these districts where these ag uses are officially allowed. And that's not the intent of our residential zones that are rural. They couldn't accommodate that anyway because of our wastewater services and fire zones and hillsides. But what we can do is we essentially remove those agricultural land uses as specific land uses that we have in our list of allowed uses. And instead add provisions and definitions in that residential zone for accessory uses, hobby agriculture, farm animal raising, to essentially allow all the same things that we're allowing today, but just re-categorizing those under residential uses, under these hobby uses as allowable uses, also for home occupations and things like that. So not changing the character of what we're doing, just redefining it so that we can make sure that we stay consistent with the constantly evolving state laws that come out surrounding housing. Another one that came out of our housing element was building height in our multifamily zones. It was found that because we have a two-story limitation, that it was potentially an impediment to building out a multifamily site. In our zones where we allow it, the twenty-four units an acre, it's very challenging to fit parking and the units on that site and the access to that site, especially on our slope sites, when everything is limited to two stories. So what this amendment does, it removes the two-story qualifier. So in some cases, you could put two stories above parking, you could put three stories. And it suggests also increasing that limit to thirty-five feet for the habitable spaces of that property. It also introduces a new setback policy, which is a really good policy when you're building buildings close to a property line, so that you get the upper portions that step back further than the lower portion. So increasing the height, increasing the setback as you go up, kind of like the graphic that I'm showing in the presentation there. One more caveat to this amendment that we're suggesting here is an increased height for portions of a building that aren't habitable, like chimney or a part of a roof feature that angles up, that they could go up an additional five feet. Uh, if you get an administrative use permit, if the director's approval use permit, where we can establish findings and conditions where that's not going to create issues for that particular location. And again, that is another little discretionary piece. It's only additional five feet and it's not intended for a floor, a habitable floor, but for a non-habitable feature. Density. Here's one that actually is just really a clarification. Right now, our housing element does establish a density in our commercial zones of twenty-four units an acre. It's simply not. In our commercial zones of 24 units an acre. It's simply not listed in our zoning. It's adopted already by our general plan. It left out of the zoning code. So this amendment simply adds it to the zoning code where it belongs, doesn't change the density of what's allowed there today. A real simple fix. Here's one intended to look at streamlining our development view process. This is something. We've been talking about for quite some time. In fact, we just got done processing two conditional use permits with the planning commission for accessory structures. We have an ordinance that requires that anytime you build an accessory structure that's greater than half of the size of the primary structure on the. On the property, which is usually the house on the property that you would need to get a conditional use permit. So this amendment would broaden our discretion, which would allow a residential accessory structure to actually match the floor area of the primary residence, be 100%. The size of it. Now, instead of a conditional use permit process, what's being proposed? Is a series of design parameters that are already pre prescribed that they would need to meet to exceed that 50% rule. Essentially that they would be behind the residence, be compatible with the pattern of development of the neighborhood. Be equal to or lesser than the size of the main house, be on a lot that conforms with zoning standards in terms of its area and size. And not be something that really results in substantial grading and removal of significant native trees. When we do have a project that makes for substantial grading and significant tree removals, they have. A separate discretionary process anyway, which is called a precise plan. And then lastly, it wouldn't block sunlight for adjacent properties or alter site distance for a road or driveway or be a significant issue. So. If they can meet this preset criteria, they would be able to build a larger accessory structure without that conditionally use permit process. If they can't, then they're still in a conditionally use permit process. Here's another one where we found a little loophole in the code that's a little unusual. And this is really only talking about residential districts. So this is not in a commercial zone. We addressed this commercial zone. The issue about scrap and junk about a year ago. This one's in a residential zone right now. Scrap and junk trash basically on a property is limited to 200 square feet. Unless you put it behind a six foot fence. Then there's no limit whatsoever. So you could have an acre, two acres of storage for that matter, if it's behind a fence. Not that we have significant issues in the city, but. Just as we go through the future, we're concerned we could have. And so I think the proposal here limits the. Area to 1,000 square feet when it's completely screened from neighboring properties or from the public right away. As a reminder, the city is not proactive in enforcement of these sorts of topics or reactive. We typically. We were not pursuing any scrap and junk issues currently in our community. This is just a loophole that we found in the code that we felt needed attention. And so it's something that the planning commission also agreed with. And is on your recommendation side. Here's one that we have run into recently with a couple of projects where there's been retaining walls that have been built. Right up against a property line, really close to a property line. That end up dramatically exceeding the fence height standards for the property line. And we end up having a very large structure. Adjacent to a property line and then it has to have a fence on top of it for protection. Currently, there's no limit to that height for that kind of barrier. So this suggestion really is looking at how we measure retaining walls and barriers on top of those walls. So for example, right now we have a six foot height limit on fences. That's, that's typical what you see between property lines so that you're not shadowing a property, you're not impacting that property. So this amendment would clarify how we measure. A retaining wall and especially when a fence or wall is located on top of that retaining wall. The proposal would limit the retaining wall, the height of a wall and that fence at eight feet unless that retaining wall is terraced. In other words, it's separated by a five foot. Horizontal space in between, whether that space in between is sloped or flat, that space in between could allow some landscaping. So therefore, if you had to have a 16 foot height difference, that there is some terracing in there and you've got some dramatically increased aesthetics on a property. Covered parking. Here's a requirement that is constantly a challenge for multifamily residential. The suggestion here is to remove the covered parking requirement for multifamily residential projects. Right now, we don't have a covered parking requirement for single family. We only have one for multifamily. In some cases, parking gets tucked below units. That's great. That's how we like to see it. But in some cases, when they design big parking lots for multifamily. We end up with very unusual structures that are an afterthought or are. A challenge to construct. They add construction costs substantial that can also impact the price of the housing or how many units they might be able to fit onto a property. The suggestion here is to remove that covered parking requirement. Leave it up to a developer if they want covered parking as an amenity for their property and how they want to integrate that. And that will really create some more design flexibility. And potentially reduce the cost of multifamily development. About half of all the parking in a multifamily zone is required to be covered right now. So it's quite a bit. And that amendment would just simply remove that requirement altogether. Mortuary services. This one's currently allowed in our retail zones. I think we just had a discussion, our last topic about what's appropriate in a commercial retail. Zone. This amendment would require a conditional use permit for a mortuary to set up in a commercial retail zone. It's important to note that a definition of a mortuary is a place where we are actually. Dealing with bodies, we're dealing with, with. That part of the ceremony. This is not the definition of an office that deals with mortuary services. That is actually allowed anywhere in the city. Even with this particular amendment, but this amendment would require a use permit for a new or expanded mortuary in a retail district. But it also at the same time adds this land use, which could be a crematory and it could be an actual mortuary service where they're doing the embalming. In our industrial districts doesn't allow use, but simply requires a CUP in, in those retail districts. We do have a couple right now. That are in a retail district on El Camino Real. Don't know if they wanted to expand anytime recently, but they have been existing there for some time. This wouldn't impact them, but if they did want to expand and they certainly are doing, if they are doing embalming services and things like that. It would require that they get a conditionally use permit. Residential gates. Right now, we don't have a definition for gates that defines. How tall they can be, how set back from a street they can be. We do have all that for fences. We simply want to define that in the code so we understand the difference between a fence and a gate. And the fact that we don't address those particular residential gates. We do need to add a setback for gates on a driveway so that. A vehicle has a space to pull in off the street before those gates open. We do want to make sure they have a height limit. That suggestion's been set at 12 foot. And we want to make sure they comply with emergency access standards. And not have them open out to the street. So some real simple clarification. These are things that we always look for anyway. When we work on development projects, but to have it in a code, have someone be able to find those standards, have it preset, makes it a heck of a lot easier. Design review committee. Right now. Designer view committee. Essentially their main charge is to look at the design of commercial and multifamily projects. When those projects are just about to go to a construction permit. We also use a designer view committee as sort of a pre level review for projects that go to planning commission and city council. But for those projects that do end up with just a construction permit. I think it's been misconstrued that that designer view committee approval is actually an entitlement. It's really not an entitlement. It's essentially a review and advice on their design. But I think it's important still to have in the designer view committee code in our municipal code that. Their endorsement of that design has a time limit to it. Unless that project is really about to get going and have applied for and maintained an active construction permit. There has been several projects that have received DRC approval. And they have not submitted construction permits in two to three years. And. It's difficult to basically be able to interpret that they don't really have an entitlement. And so I think we need to clarify that in the code. This is something that the planning commission has recommended. There would be opportunities for them to ask for extensions. Right now, we're suggesting that a DRC. Endorsement of a project, and I won't even call it an entitlement approval should last 12 months. Otherwise, what happens if your code changes? For example, we changed the code recently to require. In recent years, required conditional use permits for service stations and fuel stations. And. We want to make sure that we continue to have a life to that design review committee approval as things change. Another one on setbacks from property lines. Here's one that's always been confusing for folks, street side, front side, corner side. We often get in debates about which is the front, which is the side. And in the end, it doesn't really matter. I think as long as the property has a front yard. And a side yard. When you're on a corner, you essentially have to have two different setbacks. The side is called a 10 foot setback and the front typically required to be 20. The suggestion here is to let the developer choose what they want to be their front yard. There's so many unique circumstances in a task area where you've got curved roads and you've got. Various frontages that. It's best left to how the house is best sighted and how they want to choose it. Our code right now says that the long side needs to be the side, the short side needs to be the front. And sometimes they're both the same length or they're on a weird curve and it's just, it's, yeah, it doesn't matter. So that's a suggested amendment from the planning commission as well. And this, this one's related to that. But it's different. It's more tied into the building code. And basically our code. If a building is less than 12 feet tall, our zoning code allows that building to be as close as three foot to a property line. Now, the building code. For an unrated wall with a window requires a minimum of five feet. This amendment simply modifies the zoning code to require a five foot setback for all structures. Doesn't say they can't apply for an exception to go closer, but if they do go closer. The building code is going to require them to have a fire rated wall, which means no openings and a significant fire rating, which sometimes can create some aesthetic issues for a wall. So instead, really, we're just wanting the zoning code to match the, match the building code of that one. Almost done. Just a couple more to go over here. So bear with me. This zoning cleanup. That's being suggested on the screen here is simply a cleanup. There was some. Typos in the zoning that made unclear about ground floor office uses in the downtown commercial zone. Some years ago, five years ago now, I think we did some amendments downtown. To encourage retail uses to be the replacement of office uses on the ground floor. Especially around Sunken Gardens Park on Entrada in El Camino Real. So we, we essentially created a zoning. It does not allow ground floor office uses, except in rare cases with a conditional use permit. But we set up a specific map where that was to be implemented in the areas south of the Tascato Creek, kind of at an angle. So when I say south of the creek. The areas where Denny's is now and Bravo Bank. We took off the map and said, it's okay to have ground floor offices in that area. But it wasn't exactly clear in the code. The map wasn't clear in the code, but the language wasn't clear. This amendment would correct that intent of the code. Which would specifically allow ground floor offices south of the Tascato Creek and to continue to require a use permit. On the north side of the creek and really specify that. This last amendment, public zone table cleanup. Simply just clarifies a table discrepancy and moves the updated table. We had two tables in the code for some time. This last one, I don't think we touched on this at council earlier in the year. It's extremely minor. This involves the definition of hotels and motels. Right now, our definition for hotels and motels does clarify that these are transient lodging uses, which is what the state already defines as stays of less than 30 days. We'd like to actually clarify in our code that in our code too, a hotel motel is designed for stays of less than 30 days, adding that descriptor in there. When we at the city approve a hotel or motel and we evaluate it through the building code, we evaluate through zoning code. They're built differently than an apartment. They have different code requirements. They have different parking standards. They have transient occupancy tax. So it's very critical that we add this qualifier in here, even though it's already there by definition to really call it out so that we're all on the same page that a hotel and motel. Is clearly for stays of less than 30 days. It doesn't define that clearly. This update would clarify that length of stay. For hotels and motels, which is consistent with the state definition for transient lodging and. Consistent with, with the intent of the code. So all of these amendments that are being proposed, they're, they're all consistent with the general plan programs and the recently adopted housing element. They're consistent with the general plan land use element. They were evaluated by your planning commission. I think we had some early direction from the city council. But at this time, I want to open it up to questions and help clarify anything that. Was brought up, but the recommendation is to adopt a draft ordinance with these. Proposed amendments.
Right. Thank you, Director. And I do want to say that yes, council, we looked at this back on February 23rd of this year. And so. These are the amendments that we all unanimously agreed and said, yes, come back with the details of these. We think that based on what you've told us, that this is a good, a good go ahead. And so we have looked at this in great detail. In a public meeting. And so we've been through a lot of this before. What I would like to do is kind of go through our questions. Piece by piece, kind of like we did last time, so we can get all the questions on each item. And I'm assuming some will have more and some we may have none that are minor, but let's do that. So. When it comes to number one, the ag uses, any questions of staff? Seeing that. Number two, RMF zone heights, the moving from the 30 to the 35 feet. An extra five feet for specifically non habitable architectural features. Any questions on that? Seeing none. Let's go to number three, residential.
I'm sorry. I do want just a clarification on that question because.
Go ahead, Councilmember Daras.
Um, so because you added the, the language of the non habitable portion can be up to 40 feet. The 35 foot height mark. Is that going to be measured at the eve? Always? Or are we going to, to the peak, to the roof peak or? When, when do we decide what's what or? I'm just seeing, I'm seeing a little bit of confusion there with when to use what.
35 foot would always be measured at the very top peak of that building, that structure, unless you went in and said, I want the exception. Because I have an extra roof piece up there that's simply an attic and it's a roof overhang. And I really need that because I've got a three story structure and you're lowering the pitch of my roof. So I'm not getting the right angle. And you know, I, I can't get the right. Trust feature in here. I need to have a steeper angle for my architecture. So therefore I need that additional five feet. To get that in there, but otherwise the 35 foot is going to be measured from the absolute top peak height of the building. Unless they apply for that five foot, then it'll still be the top peak, but whatever's in within that five feet cannot be a habitable space.
Okay. So that 40 foot. Exception or to raise up, there isn't just for like a chimney or something. It can actually be the entire roof. Because it's maybe longer span and it's going up higher.
That's right. It could be part of the attic space. It could be part of a, another feature of the actual roof, the actual eve. As long as it's not part of interior conditioned habitable space.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. So on to number three, residential density, just including that 24 unit per acre in our code that's already. I'm assuming no questions on that. All right. Number four, detached accessory structures. Questions on this item. Councilmember Borbo.
Yes. And you know what? I am. I had actually, you know, proposed this idea way back when I was on the planning commission because of seeing as Phil has noted, how many? How many accessory structures would come before the planning commission? They almost always got approved, you know, with some conditions. And so, you know, it took a lot of staff time to write those reports. A lot of money was paid by applicants for hearings. So I'm all for this in concept, but. I am a little concerned. Maybe we've gone a little too far. We're setting the limit at 3,000 square feet. And if I understand. How you've laid this out, Phil, basically it's like, hey, if you meet these criteria. You know, no CUP, no planning commission hearing, it can be approved at the staff level. And I'm assuming that you could still exceed some of those criteria if you come forward with a CUP. And I'm assuming that you could still exceed some of those criteria if you come forward with a CUP. In, in general, is that correct? That, you know?
Yes.
To meet these basic criteria or these criteria. My concern when I say about going too far is what, you know, what had prompted me at the time to, to look at this was how you have, you know, you, you have a 1,000, a 1,200 square foot older house and you could only put in a 600 square foot garage workshop, whatever. But if you had a, you know, 3,500 square foot house, you could put up a 1,750 square foot garage workshop or whatever. And it seemed inconsistent in that regard.
Yeah.
Particularly on larger lots that had older homes. And, but what I'm concerned is about when we go to 3,000 square feet as our, you know, maximum size here. There's no indication as to lot size relative to that, right? I'm not seeing anything relative to lot size. So is that to say that I could be on a quarter acre lot, have a 3,000 square foot house and put in a 3,000 square foot accessory structure with, with really, you know, just a staff level review?
There is the caveat in there that that lot would have to be a conforming lot. And so a lot of our 3,000 square foot houses are on the RS zone lots, which their minimum lot size is two and a half acres. So for example, my lot in the RS zone is one acre, feels huge, but it's non-conforming. So you have to have a conforming lot, which means for most properties, that's well over an acre. Our RSF zone is one acre, our RS zone is two and a half to 10 acres. So in 99% of the cases, you're not going to be able to do that because you don't have a conforming lot. So if you have a quarter acre lot with a 3,000 square foot house on it, you're probably in an area that either is a non-conforming lot or you're in a planned development that has unique circumstances to it anyway. But sure, I mean, I suppose if there's a rare case where you fit that narrow category and you have a conforming quarter acre lot and you've got a giant house on it, certainly, but then can you actually fit in on that property?
Okay.
Behind that house, so.
Right, that, that brings me to the next question. And, and I'm thinking of like there's a development of fairly large houses like via Tortuga, kind of off of Tascadaro Avenue, getting closer to Santa Rosa, I think. You know, fairly large houses on fairly small lots. And I'm thinking of that, but I, I'm also thinking of setbacks. You know, there's an email that we received that Laura will probably read as public comment where somebody, you know, was concerned about a neighbor wanting, you know, put an accessory structure five feet from their, you know, from their property line in a RS zone. And of course, one of the things when, you know, if you, if you buy in the RS zone, you're kind of thinking, oh, I got a lot of space between me and the neighbors. And you, you would hope that, you know, if your neighbor's sitting on a acre plus lot, you know, or two and a half acre lot, they're, they're going to have enough room to build their, whatever they want to build, you know, not right on your fence line. Is there any setback? I didn't see any special language regarding setbacks. So is that to say, to assume that the, the five-foot minimum setback would apply in these circumstances?
Yes, if they could meet all of those design parameters and it's behind the house, we find it is compatible with the pattern developed in the neighborhood and that it doesn't block sunlight for that property. So I think it would be a rare case when they could meet all these performance standards and still be five foot from the property. If they were in a location where there wasn't another house or property improvements adjacent to that portion of the property, they could probably do that. But then, if that's the case, they're not going to really be impacting that adjacent property. So sure, I guess in some circumstances, there could be a situation that's created where they meet all of these performance criteria. They're five foot from the property line and they're creating a situation that the neighbor may not be happy with. Certainly, that's, that's.
Right.
Certainly a potential.
When you're doing this on larger lots, whether a larger setback might be more appropriate. Now, another thing is, and I had, you know, brought this up as an example, and you, you've incorporated language addressing it regarding overhangs. And, and so the language you've come back with basically says, you know, 10-foot overhangs, if I understand your language, you're correctly, 10-foot overhangs are okay. But there's not a limit on the overhangs. Is that?
There's no limit, yeah.
Just saying overhangs projecting away from the building. 10 feet or more would count, you know, towards the area, which would imply that 10 feet or less would not count. So if I had a 3,000 square foot house and I want to build my 3,000 square foot big garage workshop, whatever, that's, that's roughly 60 by 50 in a rectangle. And that means I could have 600 square feet of overhang on each side, each long side and 500 square feet of overhang on each short side. So that would be another 2,200 square feet of overhang for a total footprint of like 4,200 square feet. Am I, I mean, that's correct, right? That's, that's a correct interpretation?
I need to evaluate, before I answer that question, let me take a look at that. I'm trying to see where that overhang section is in the code. Or is that an answer we gave you that we already have in our code?
It's in the staff report on 116. I don't, so I didn't highlight it in the, in the code language.
Okay, let me go back to that language. I need to, I need to remind myself of exactly where.
It would be on, if it, if it's in there, it would be on 155 or one.
Yeah, I was just on that 155 and I don't see it in terms of.
Yeah, so when I, when I add up the, you know, 3,000 square feet, it's a pretty darn large structure. Especially on a, you know, on a non-acres lot that could be built, you know, in a five, within five feet of the neighboring property line and could have up to, you know, 2,200 square feet of overhang. You know, which actually, that's actually 5,200 square foot footprint. I'm a little concerned that even though I really wanted this, that maybe it's gone. That's what I mean by perhaps having gone a little too far and, you know, maybe, maybe we're just being over generous with some of that criteria. I would actually wonder about the, like, it must be, not be between the house and the road. As you've noted, we have all kinds of odd, not oddities, but unique topographical lot shapes, you know, et cetera, so that in some places the, you know, clearly most appropriate place to build somebody's workshop is between the house and the road, which on an acreage property isn't going to look out of place at all. So that's one I'm wondering why that's a particular criteria. It seems kind of tight versus some of these others. It seemed very liberal, if you will. I don't know if that makes sense to you. Okay, got it. So the, you know, that's kind of questions on that. On gates.
We're not.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. You're, you're right. I'm sorry. I think that's, hang on, setbacks, overhangs, size, lot size minimum. Yeah, I think I covered my questions on accessory structure.
Okay, thank you. Other council questions on accessory structures? Alright, seeing then, let's move on to scrap and junk. Any questions on scrap and junk? Councilmember Borbo?
One question on scrap and junk. Part of the, the language change in the wording, let's see, what page was it on? You talk about, there's mention of the number of inoperative vehicles allowed on a, on a site. There is no limit on the number of operative vehicles? Or what are claimed to be operative vehicles? So.
There is not. There is not. So they can run, drive, start and move around? There's not.
So you're, you're familiar with a, a neighbor I previously had, you know, who had 40, 50, you know, vehicles in varying states of.
Oh, absolutely.
Fearance. You're, you're personally familiar with that. And so, but that is allowed under our code where we say you can have one inoperative vehicle. But essentially, if I understand our wording correctly, you can have any number of operable vehicles parked in a residential zone.
Yes.
That's something I think maybe we should address in the future. Okay.
You wouldn't think you'd have to, but I think your, your neighbor, I think, proved that we do probably have to eventually contemplate that, that topic. Certainly.
I know about 20 or 15.
Oh, good, good.
Right, scrap and junk it is. Let's see, on the number six, the fence wall height standards, retaining wall questions. Councilmember Funk?
Yes, is there anything in this change that would impact the design or allowability of the proposal we're going to be dealing with on Duck Creek Mini Storage? That has been, has been appealed to the council and we will be hearing appeal on in to, I believe, the 9th of June. And, and apologies, I didn't, didn't pre-wire that question. It just occurred to me, given the way that we're staging retaining walls and heights and things that that I should ask that question.
So it's important to note in that particular scenario, it is a conditional use permit. And so we do have the discretion to grant differences to this. And to look at all those kinds of things. But it's also important to know that they, they have applied before this amendment. So even if it wasn't a CUP and we had discretion and full latitude, this code won't go in, wouldn't go into effect if, if the council took action tonight and we came back for second reading, it would still be another 30 days. So you're looking at, you know, up to about 60 days before it goes into effect. So no, it doesn't have any effect on that either way. There are some walls on that property that channelize the creek that are probably going to be getting close to this, especially when you have barriers. So it's, it is going to be something that in the future, we would want different types of designs on that for landscape in between to increase the aesthetics. And to reduce impacts close to the property line.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Other council questions? Alright, on to number seven, covered parking for multifamily. That seems like kind of an easy one. Councilmember Darris?
Yeah, just one question on this one. Are there any state requirements for multifamily projects like this to have covered parking for, for ADA?
I don't know, not that I'm aware of. That's a good question. I'm not sure. There might, you know.
If you have covered parking, you have to provide accessible parking, you know, under every type of parking. But I didn't know if a covered space was actually a requirement. I don't think it is.
Think it is. If you have covered parking, it's, it's considered preferential parking and therefore you would need to provide that preferential to accessible folks and to have a path of access from.
Right, but with the, with the desire to eliminate the requirement for covered parking, I just want to make sure that it's not actually a state requirement. Or an ADA requirement to have that. But otherwise, I'm, I'm certainly okay with it.
And that brings up an interesting point. I'm just curious, do we have something in our code that says if we inadvertently have something that is contrary to state code that, you know, obviously state code applies? I mean, it's probably not necessary because state code does apply, but I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay. Onto number eight, mortuary services. I, I had a question on this. I was wondering, we've got those couple that are already currently there that would be now considered non-conforming. Have, did we reach out to them or do they know about this? Do we have any feedback from them about how it would impact their business if they had any plans?
We did not actually reach out to the services that we have right now on El Camino Real. We have not heard from them. Again, it wouldn't make them illegal or non-conforming, but it would make it so that if they did want to expand, they would have to get a conditional use permit. So it's called non-conforming by entitlement. But I think it's a good point. We haven't, we haven't reached out.
Okay. Okay, non-conforming by entitlement. I guess you potentially, I mean, I'm just kind of thinking through this then. That if they, let's say one of them came for a CUP, it could certainly be, well, actually, no, they couldn't even have a CUP because we're saying no longer.
No, they could, they could have a CUP. So they could come in and say, you know what, we want to add a huge piece to the back. We want to double the size of our space. Yeah, it would be a CUP. And I think that where those locations are now on El Camino would be very appropriate to do that. So I think it would be an easy sell for them, but certainly it's a, it's a good topic of discussion.
Yeah, okay. Um, other questions on, from council on mortuary services? Alright, seeing then, let's move on to number nine, residential driveway gates. Councilmember Borbo?
Yeah, my question on this was, I didn't see language. I saw an indication regarding heights and stuff, but I occasionally see gates that have an over, you know, you're basically driving under the gate, you know, they're under some sort of gate feature. I don't know what you call that, arch or something. Usually it's a wooden crossbeam of some decorative wooden crossbeam of some sort. Is that allowed under this? And if it is, I assume there's some minimum height because you might have to get a fire truck or something on. But is that allowed under this?
This wasn't addressed. It wouldn't be disallowed under this. This wouldn't prohibit that. That is considered a different feature. It is a, it's not a fence, it's not a gate. It's instead, it's a, it's a building feature. And it was not, it was not addressed as part of this particular updating in terms of that kind of a feature.
Oh, it's not really a gate, so my question's irrelevant then. So, okay, cool, thank you.
Any other questions on residential driveway gates? Alright, seeing none. Let's move on to now minor cleanup of inconsistencies. Number 10, DRC action expiration. Seeing then, move on to number 11, corner lot setbacks. Councilmember Darris?
Yeah, and that one, I know we've discussed this before, but a corner lot and, and what, what size, what side is the front and what's the side on the corner? If this is a, a blank lot and someone's building a brand new home on this, is the address already set as to which street is going to be the address? Because wouldn't that be simply the front?
Addressing, we'd like it to be the front. It doesn't have to be. But usually the address is where their entrance is. But their entrance doesn't have to be on the front of the house. It could be on the side. So this is really in, not relating to, to access points or to address points. This is relating to the actual structure and how far it is from the property line on a street side or a front side, what they want to call their front yard. But there's some houses that have a front setback and a front yard, yet they're accessed by a driveway and a door on the side and they're addressed off that side. And so this doesn't correlate to that. They can choose that separately, regardless of their front yard or streets, street yard. But it's always best to have everything all work together, but that's going to be up to them and up to emergency services, how they're addressed and how they're accessed.
So, okay, so they can choose which, as you said, which, which is going to be their shorter setback or the bigger setback? And in their entrance and driveway and garage can be on either, on either side?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see, corner, I think, well, I have other setback questions, but it might be in another section.
Next section, yes, thank you. Councilmember Borbo?
Thank you. As you've noted, you know, and we discussed in the Tascadaro, we have a lot of unique lot shapes and a lot of unique topographies. So there aren't very many lots in a Tascadaro that look like this on the drawing. And so what I'm wondering is, and I think it's great, we're going to allow them to choose their side, their front, whatever. But are there lots wherein, you know, you make a curved driveway in and then the best place to build the house is a flat spot that's tucked into the corner of the downslope of a hill or whatever. And, and so is the 20-foot setback waiverable in terms of somebody submitting a site plan and going, hey, the best place to do this, whether it is, you know, mostly for topographical reasons, but I can have a shorter road, I can void cutting down a ton of trees, whatever case may be where we'd say, you know, the best place, you know, there's a screen of streets, trees on the road, whatever, best place for this house is in the very corner of the lot with a, with a 10-foot setback. Would that, would that be allowable under? Would that, would that be allowable under appropriate circumstances through some sort of AUP or?
Yes.
Way of everything.
We already have a built-in setback exception for the street yard, for the front yard for that purpose exactly, because we have lots that are very sloped. So we have a sloping lot adjustment that allows you to build closer to the streets, that you don't have to drop down so far and build your garage closer to the street. So we have some of those things already built into the code.
Right, okay. That's all, yeah, that's all I needed. Thank you, thank you, very good.
Any other corner lot questions? All right, we'll move on to number 12, side and rear setbacks. Councilmember Darris.
Okay, just a clarification because you had mentioned that, well, in fact, it's right there, the 12 feet tall can be located as close as three feet. That is just for non-habitable structures, that wouldn't be a part of a, a part of a house, part of anything for human habitation, and that's, that's in our code right now in the, in the Tascadero zoning code or?
It is in the code, it is in the code right now. It is, it's for accessory structures.
Right, that's what I wanted to make sure that that was clear because that
Not for a house, it's for
A portion of the house is less than 12 feet or?
Yeah.
That wouldn't even make sense, but I just wanted to make sure. And in setbacks between on, between buildings, we're talking about, well, maybe, again, I don't know if I'm in the same party, but structures and we're getting into big structures and you talked about if they can fit on there, is there a setback? A minimum setback to the residence? I mean, I think if you're within a certain feet of the residence, it becomes, now you're starting to add the square footages together, am I correct? I think it's six feet, but it might be, might be more than that. You know, you know, if you're going to add to your house and you go over 3,000 square feet or whatever it is, you have to, you have to add fire sprinklers to it, whatever.
Yeah, there are some qualifiers for fire protection.
Right, so if you build an accessory structure or something that's within six feet of your house, then the square footage of that accessory structure
Will have to be included.
Of the house, and now you've exceeded that 3,000 square feet.
Yep.
So, I mean, is that something that needs to be addressed in addition to this or?
It's already addressed, so that's already managed by the building required code. It doesn't need to be in the zoning as well.
All right, all right.
And this here is really just making the zoning code consistent with the building code.
Yeah.
So we're not. All right. Councilmember Borbo.
Yeah, I understand, you know, this has to be done anyway, but when we talk about these setbacks, how do those apply to, let's say, in downtown where we recently had an older building torn down? And, you know, there's kind of a vacant lot there on El Camino. Kind of across from, let's say Dunbar Brewery in that range. That those buildings were built zero line, zero lot line, I mean, brick wall to brick wall, you know, touching. And I'm assuming perhaps downtown zoning is different, this doesn't apply there or what's?
It does not apply there. Downtown zoning is very different. This is for a residential accessory structure. I probably should have clarified that.
Accessory.
Yeah, downtown zoning, we want structures to be wall to wall and right up at the sidewalk. It does, it does require building code stuff to happen, basically, when you build right up to a property line on the side with a commercial building, it has to be a firewall. That's why our traditional downtown commercial buildings are all block or all concrete on the side that's facing the property line, has to be fire rated. But this doesn't apply to those downtown commercial buildings. This is really written as an exclusion in our code for an accessory structure on a residential property.
Got it, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted that additional explanation, thank you.
Right. Moving on to number 13, clarifying ground floor uses in downtown commercial. All right, I think we're good there. Number 14, public zone uses table. Any questions? All right, and then finally, anything on the hotel motel definition clarification?
Just what happens when a lodging establishment becomes on their own accord, long-term, not super long-term, but let's say, you know, they go into three-month leases, six-month leases for traveling professionals, that sort of thing. But essentially are not acting as a hotel, not paying TOT. What's what happens then?
So technically
How does this definition affect that?
Technically, it's already, this definition doesn't affect that. It's already a violation of the code for a hotel to utilize long-term lodging greater than 30 days, 30 days or greater. That's, that's already in place now. So that's something we would have, if we, you know, get a continuing recurrence of that, that we do have to work through our code enforcement to rectify that issue. Whether we change this or not, that's still the case. A hotel motel is a hotel motel. If they were approved as something different as an apartment project or through their process, they asked for long-term occupancy, that's different. But we would definitely review that differently through the building code and through the zoning code if we were going to do that.
I believe we've had that occur. I don't know if it's still occurring, but we've had that occur.
Yes.
Any other questions on hotel motel? All right, seeing no further questions. If there's no other questions from council, I will go ahead and open up to public comment. So looking one last time, seeing none at the moment, go ahead and open this up to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, go ahead and raise your hand. If you're on the phone, press star nine. And while we're waiting, I know we do have at least one item that was emailed to be read into the record, and so I will ask our city clerk to go ahead and do that for us.
Here we go. I am writing to oppose a portion of the planning and zoning text amendments, item B3 on the May 25, 2021 Agenda Staff Report, beginning on page 111 of the Agenda Packet. Specifically, I oppose this proposed change. Four, a zoning amendment to increase the size of allowed accessory structures on certain conforming properties when particular performance standards can be met. This amendment would allow accessory structures such as workshops, storage barns, and related to be constructed up to 100% of the size of a primary structure without the need for a conditional use permit. This change, excuse me, this change would harden neighbors and neighborhoods by doubling the size of accessory structures allowed. Under the zoning code, non-agriculture accessory buildings require only a five-foot setback from an adjoining property line. In my neighborhood, a property owner is proposing a thousand-square-foot workshop be placed five feet from our property line, which is a very, which is very near a small 1,000-square-foot residence on our property. Since his home is 2,400 square feet and attached garage 800 square feet, this new change would allow a 3,000-square-foot accessory building be built, building to a butt and dwarf the home on our property. Even 1,000 square feet is too much. This is not the rural living we signed up for when we bought this property nearly 20 years ago. I urge the city council to reject this change. The staff report tries to justify this proposed change, claiming that small residences on large properties create anomalies and a more costly process for applicants. These are not good justifications for this change and ignore the effect of allowing accessory buildings to equal the size of large residents, particularly given the very narrow setback requirements. If cost is the concern, lower the fees, but the point of zoning regulations is to protect the neighbors, neighborhoods, and ultimately the city. This change has the possibility of greenlighting large land use changes without proper oversight that will adversely affect the city. Please reject this proposed change, and this was submitted by Rick Derivam. Derivam.
Thank you, and to note that he's on Cascabel, and maybe when we come back from public comment, the director could address zoning in that area if that's easily found. Thank you, Laura. I'm assuming there's no other emails. Anyone else, any attendees? I'm looking over at you. If anyone wants to speak, please raise your hand now. Luke, do we have any callers wishing to comment on this item?
We do not.
All right, seeing nobody, I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to, oh, I will quickly reopen public comment. And we have Deborah McCrell that would like to speak.
I'm sorry, I'm new at this. I had to change devices. Can you hear me?
We can hear you just fine.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted you to, I agree with the last person that commented and think that serious consideration should be given to the setbacks in these areas and with the homes. I have a property that is on San Jacinto near Vida, and they've plopped down a commercial-looking trailer, travel trailer with a five-foot offset from the front of the road, and it's kind of blocking the driveway to my beautiful property that's on, you know, three-quarters of an acre on a corner lot, and they're on less than a half-acre lot, and I'm not really sure how that is being allowed, a second unit there. And also with that setback, it actually creates a site distance issue exit my driveway and with the roads, which are very unique here, so. Yeah, that it can cause serious issues, and I'd like that to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCrell. Any other members of the public wishing to speak, please raise your hand now. All right, seeing no one else, we'll go ahead and close public comment again and bring it back to council. So I think just with councilmember Borbo's comments and, you know, some things that we've heard from public, I think we do want to focus on that accessory structure and setbacks and I think the way Charles put it was good, like, are we being maybe too liberal with this and need to really concern the character of the neighborhood and what the impacts are? And maybe just within the specifics that we had from the couple of public members, members of the public. Like, for instance, on Cascabel, is that, would that be considered non-conforming? Is that area, like, I know where I live because I'm a third of an acre, would be a non-conforming lot? So just curious, some of these specific things that we're talking about.
On Cascabel, they're, they're in the RS zone, so anything less than two and a half acres is considered non-conforming. I also want to bring up two other points that I heard in the public comments, and one was about an accessory dwelling unit, and the other was about an agricultural accessory building. Both of those are not covered by this particular piece of the ordinance. This piece of the ordinance only pertains to an accessory structure that is a workshop or a garage or other studio or accessory structure that's not an accessory dwelling unit, which has its own code and own limitations that are governed by the state. And they're not an agricultural accessory building, which has a whole other different code. So when it's an agricultural accessory building, when there's animals in it or farm equipment, they don't have a size limitation. They can be 10,000 square feet. But they have to have a minimum site area, they can only be on a site that is an acre or more. They have a 50-foot front setback, they have 25-foot side and rear setbacks, and they have height limitations. So that's a barn, basically, it's a big barn, and there, that's an agricultural barn. ADUs, they're limited to 1,200 square feet, and they have different setback requirements, and they have all sorts of state mandates. But anyway, back to Cascabel, that would be a non-conforming lot, so these provisions would not apply.
Okay. And I would also encourage our last speaker that if you, or anyone, any member of the public for that matter, if you have an issue in your neighborhood where you're thinking that there is something going on that you don't think is quite within code, reach out to us and let us know. As the director said, we are, we react when, when the public comes with something and say, hey, I think this is a violation, I have a concern. We react and we go take a look at that. We are not out scouting to see if people are doing the wrong thing. One, that's just kind of not how we roll in the Tascadero, but also we certainly don't have the staff to do that. But if you have a concern, you've got a question, please reach out because we are there to, to help you with that and take any action that would be needed to be taken. So with that, let's have a conversation, councilmember Funk, around, let's maybe stick with the accessory structures right now, and then we'll see if there's some others we want to talk about. Councilmember Funk.
Thank you. First, a couple of questions. We've had a lot of discussion around conforming lots. Could you define a conforming lot?
Yes, a conforming lot is a lot that conforms to all of the standards in our zoning regulations in terms of its size, and that includes its width. And it's sometimes its location, for example, there's a lot of flag lots in town that don't have proper flag lot access, or they're too narrow in the back, or their depth and width relationship is offset. Or they might have, most cases, a non-conforming lot is just too small. We have a lot of non-conforming lots in the city just because they're too small, they're less than the minimum lot size, because these lots were created prior to city incorporation, and when the city came in and adopted a general plan, the lot size minimums got a lot larger because of the roads, the access, the fire hazards, wastewater needs, and all of those things. So that's what a conforming, a conforming lot is one that is at least the minimum lot size and at least the minimum dimensions for a lot and at least the minimum access for a lot.
Okay, and then the second question, if, and we've heard these concerns about buildings being put at the edge of property lines in ways that that feel compromising to, maybe our out-of-scale or compromising to a smaller structure on a neighboring property. You know, particularly a smaller house or smaller ADU on a residential property. Is the, is there enough flexibility in the AUP process that the judgment can be applied to those situations so that if somebody wants to put a really large structure right now, you know, close to the property line that is near the neighbor's house, then that maybe they would require to have a larger setback as part of that process, or do you not have that discretion?
Absolutely have that discretion to increase the setback if they're asking for discretionary exceptions. Now, if it's, if it fits all of that performance criteria that's being proposed in the code and everything's perfect and they're a conforming lot and they're in, you know, the same pattern of the development in the neighborhood and they're behind the house, we don't have that discretion. But if they're asking for an exception or they don't meet any of those performance criteria, or if they're not a conforming lot, then they would still have to get that use permit and we'd have discretion, so. It was designed so that there's almost no cases where you're going to have a giant structure on a smaller lot that's going to be close to another property or close to another house. But if the council were concerned, you could also add a setback provision in here for accessory structures that increases that setback as you get over that 50% size threshold. That's something that staff did not add. I think I've heard some discussion along those lines about being too close to the property line. So that's just food for thought. I mean, I suppose that could be added in this case, to increase that setback as you get over that 50% threshold.
Thank you.
And I'm curious, along that line, if we added that and then say somebody, could they, could they ask for a waiver of that, say, through the AUP process because, you know, whatever the configuration of a lot is, and they're not too close to the neighbor, so that setback isn't really an important aspect, is there that flexibility there?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Borbo.
Having a hard time finding my mute button, sorry. Yeah, my thought process on this was, I think 3,000 square feet is kind of too big to go through a, you know, without having a CUP sort of thing, or at least an AUP, that 3,000 is a little big. I kind of wanted the overhang thing addressed. I, I kind of visualized that there would be some sort of perhaps sliding scale or something, if you will, when you talk about lot size and setbacks. Because again, as you described, Phil, you, there might be very few cases where you could fit a, you know, a 3,000-square-foot garage with another 2,000 square feet of overhang on a quarter-acre lot, although this does not preclude that. But I think it's probably more likely you're going to get, somebody wants to stick that 3,000-square-foot thing, you know, they've got acreage, but for some reason they want to stick it 10 feet from the neighbors. And that's, I think, you know, is something that should require some review, so I would want to increase the setbacks to some degree. Or look at whether or not there's a kind of a sliding scale of, you know, setbacks. You know, compared to the size of the accessory structure, you know, compared to the size of the lot and/or that, you know, having overhangs of the size that I described there that would be allowed under this. That's, you know, you end up with such a large That's, you know, you end up with such a large, such a very large footprint that you're starting to get outside of the scale, even in neighborhoods with fairly large, large homes. So.
But I think the, the point is you're never going to have a quarter acre lot. This is what I heard you say, Director. A quarter acre lot is never going to be a conforming lot. It would be a minimum of one acre.
In our, in most of our zones, that's the case. Yeah, there are some of the zoning districts where you've got, even our multifamily districts, actually they're, they're half acre lot size. So everything is a half acre or, but most of our, 99% of our lot sizes are over an acre. You're right.
Right, but we do have, you know, like along Tascadero Avenue and different places. Certainly on, on the east side of the freeway, we certainly have conforming lots that are smaller, you know, that are half acre or less, right? Or they mostly non-conforming, like on Spaghetti Hill, those lots range, because of the topography, they range anywhere from less than a quarter acre to, you know, to an acre.
Yeah. And that's where I am, but if you look at the zoning code, like it tells you what the minimum zone, and I can't remember where I am, it's an acre or half an acre, but I'm, I'm a third of an acre. So I know I'm a non-conforming lot.
Yes.
Yeah. So what we're, I think what we're hearing, what I, what I'm, what I'm getting a sense of from the public and both, I think from public and the council is that we, we, basically we want to make sure that we don't have some big gargantuan structure right next to a fence where the neighbor's like, oh, thanks for that. Because as, as Charles said, they can have this big space and somehow they want to put it right there. And then we also, of course, don't want to have this laborious process that everybody who comes to get an accessory structure has to go through and it's really expensive. So what it sounds like is that possibly the way to do that is it, it seems like to on the fly, do sliding scales or things like that really couldn't be done. This would have to come back at a later time. Could we, and maybe I'll look to council member Borbo, maybe propose a setback or a different size limitation? What do you think right now, without getting too complicated?
Right. Well, to simplify it, I, I know I would, I would go with like a, you know, 2,000 square foot. You know, and that beyond that, you still got to go through the, the old process. And, and increase the setback some number. I'm not sure how to address, address overhangs in a simple way. I like to give, you know, use the AUP process as much as we can as opposed to the CUP process. So it can be done at staff level. So I mean, those are the kind of things I would look at as far as, you know, changing this for tonight would be a, a smaller square foot limit, a larger setback limit. Keeping in mind, all of those things can be, you know, waived going through the process. Yeah, but I don't know, like I said, I don't know how to address overhang. So I either say, you know, we should bring it back or we just kind of go with those, at least those two changes of a maximum size. That's less than 3,000, I would suggest 2,000 and an increased setback. You know, which I, I don't know, I'd kind of leave that. I, I'd be open to whatever, you know, people suggest on, I just think 10 feet is too close for a structure that large.
And I would say too, that the setback would need to be from where for the overhang ends, not the footprint of the building and then you overhang that's, you know, another two or three feet, however many feet closer.
Yeah, from a neighborhood compatibility perspective, if I'm staring over, you know, a fence line onto an overhang, the overhang is part of the building as far as the neighbor is concerned.
Yeah. So Director, go ahead, council member Daris.
I'm sorry, with, with respect to the size of the building and being 10 feet from the property line, I, I understand what, what you're saying, Charles, but you could have a 3,000 square foot building and the, and the face of the building that's, that's parallel to the property line could be a very short, could be 25 feet, could be a 20 foot. And so it's not a big building. I mean, if it's 60 feet across, he's saying that was like a big building, but it still could be less than 2,000 square feet. Now you're looking at a 60 foot side. So I don't see limiting or just coming up with an arbitrary number and saying, well, 2,000 square feet should be the maximum size. I don't really agree with that. I, I, I think the, what we, what we've got proposed, I think I'm comfortable with it. But I think some more thought, if we're going to, if we're going to limit the size because you're concerned about it being close to the neighbor's house in the property, then maybe needs to be another way. But just random number, because like I said, the, the building size is, is what, what side's facing the property line? Maybe we could say that the length of the building, I don't know, but then you come up with another random number.
Right, but keep in mind, I understand what you're saying, Mark, but keep in mind that we're not limiting it, we're not precluding this. We're saying these criteria, you can come in, you know, with a simplified process. You know, because we're trying to make it easier on staff and on applicants. So we're not limiting those other situations that we're describing. We're just saying, you know, that we're, we're increasing the, the, the simplified process. You know, even, even going to 2,000, it would be a substantial increase in simplifying the process and reducing the number that have to be reviewed by planning commissioner staff. We're not precluding, you know, a 3,000 square foot structure or a 10 foot setback. We're just saying those, those would still have to go through the regular.
Well, in, I guess one suggestion I would have on, on the setback is, I mean, if it's, if it's being close to the neighbor's house is a concern. And I can see where in some cases it would be that maybe there's a caveat in there that the distance from the neighbor's house must be, and then again, you figure out what's going to be comfortable. Is it 50 feet? And if the neighbor's house is 25 feet from the property line, then you have a 25 foot setback or however you want to do that, whatever number is comfortable. And then, then it becomes more fair because if their house is right on 10 feet, well, then you got to move it way out. But if their house is 60 feet away and it was not fair that you're putting your building 10 feet from the property line, I would say, yeah, it kind of is fair because your house is 60 feet away. So where, you know, but I think a distance to that building might be fair.
That is similar to what we do with marijuana, right? So the setback is, you know, however many feet from the property line, but also this many feet from the house next to you. So.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that's a fair point, Mark, you know. But that would lend itself towards, you know, having Phil come back with something, I guess.
Yeah, Director, based on what you're hearing from us, do you, can you propose a simple solution? Or is this something where you think, hey, let's come back next year with this?
No, I think I can, I think I can craft a pretty quick solution. I think what I'm hearing is we have a section in the code now that says you can go up to 100% of the, of the gross floor area, the principal structure instead of up to 3,000 square feet. That would be up to 2,000 square feet. And that we could also add a setback provision in here in the performance standards that if you exceed that 50%, that your side setback shall be a minimum of 10 feet. Right now it's five feet. And that the distance from that, the building location of that accessory structure shall be at least 50 feet from the nearest habitable structure on adjacent property. So language like that could be added pretty simply on the fly.
And then anyone that wanted to apply for a waiver to that, something outside of that, then they would come through that AUP process and have that discretion.
Right now, yes, we, that's how we have it anyway. So they go through an AUP process that they couldn't make that process. So we'd enter discretionary process and at that point we'd invite the neighbors to come in and talk. And that would be appealable as well.
I, I like your wording, Phil. I would, I would even, I would believe that even 40 feet would be sufficient from neighboring, you know, residents.
Yeah, exactly, because I'm thinking about that as well. If the house is even 15 feet from the property line and you got to be 50 feet away, that, that could really, really affect someone's ability to put an accessory structure on their property. And I wouldn't want to limit someone's ability in that, to that degree. But I, I think the closeness is something that needs to be addressed. So just so I'm, I'm clear on this, I mean, well, I'm not real comfortable with limiting it to 2,000 square feet because some of these properties are big enough that they'll be able to handle it. And just by virtue of saying 3,000 is too big, I'm, I'm not real comfortable with that.
Remember that they can come through the AUP process, which is a very simple process. And you can't do it, we're just saying this, if you meet all of these things, have at it, it's super easy. If you don't meet that, if you want an exception to that, you want a 3,000, you want to be closer to the, whatever it is, come through the AUP process.
Okay, okay. So, 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 okay, so if your house is 3,000 square feet or 3,500 square feet, then their accessory structure can be 3,500 square feet, provided they meet all the criteria?
They'd have to go through the AUP process to be that big.
Okay.
2,000 is pretty big. When you think about 2,000 square feet, well, a typical two car garage is 400 square feet. So therefore you can fit, you know, I'm starting to count cars now, you know.
Or inoperable cars.
Yeah.
Council member Funk, I saw your hand up a minute ago.
Oh, no.
Okay. So how are we, how are we thinking on this? Do we like the, for the, you know, for the, for the bare minimum, right? So that you don't have to go through the AUP, 2,000 square feet, 10 foot setback, 40 feet from the neighbor. And then anything above and beyond that, you come in for an AUP and Director's discretion to make it 3,000 square feet closer to the lot line, whatever that neighborhood situation might call for. Are we good on that? All right. Let's see, anything else that we had in here? I did, I did have a concern about the, the mortuary, just simply because the two businesses in there haven't been notified. So we would put them in a position that if they wanted to expand, they would need to get a CUP. And they don't know that, so they're not here to say anything about it. So that, it's not that we have a ton of businesses doing that. I certainly would hate that a mortuary comes in in the meantime and then gets into something. But I don't know that we have a bunch of mortuaries that are coming in to, to do that in the zoning area. So I would love my colleagues' feedback on that. Mayor Pro Tim Newsom.
I agree with that. I don't want to single out one set of businesses just because we haven't notified them. So I'd like to pull that or at least wait until we can have their take on it.
Okay. Any other comments on that? Are my, are colleagues good with that pulling that for now and bringing it back next time with, you know, making sure that they've been notified? Council member Funk.
You have to wait for a whole year.
Is it every year or every six months, Phil, that we do this?
Sorry, it took me a while to find the unmute button. Typically it's every year.
Is there, are there major risks involved if we, you know, if we just let that ride for a year? This doesn't seem like that's a huge cleanup.
No, it's just, we took the opportunity. No, there's no, there's no, there's no mortuary proposed right now. It was just a cleanup. So.
Phil, didn't we just have one of the mortuaries just move in the last year? That's why I think they might be affected, the one on El Camino.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I definitely like to pull that.
And everyone okay with that? Okay, I'm seeing the nods of the heads. Okay, good. So that would be, let's see, so that's number eight. We're going to pull before we've changed. Any other questions or changes before we make a motion? All right, so I will look to my colleagues for someone who would like to make that or I can, if you like.
If you, if you kept the notes, why don't you make the motion?
All right, so we will, let me go back to the language, if I can find it, what page? Okay, so I moved that we introduced for first reading by title only the draft ordinance amending the Tascare Municipal Code Title IX Zoning Ordinance with the sections that are listed. Changing number four of detached accessory structures, having the maximum limit of 2,000, not requiring the AUP, 2,000 square feet, a 10 foot setback, which would include the, the, any overhang and 40 feet from the nearest there you go, habitable structure. And then removing number eight mortuary services to bring that back next time for cleanup with notification to those businesses that would be affected. Is that, I'll ask the city clerk if that's clear.
Yeah, we just, Phil, can you point out what sections of the ordinance those are? Because while it's good to tell us for the staff report, we need to know for the minutes what actual sections of the ordinance those are.
Just give me a brief second. I knew, I, I had a feeling you might, you might ask for that. So let's go to start with the, the accessory structure, which is in nine dash 6.106. That's going to be on page 155 of your draft ordinance or your draft report there. And that's under sections nine dash 6.106 to I, and yeah, that should be enough for that one, right? And then the other one is, sorry, it's a little dark in here. My glasses are not cutting it in terms of the print. And then the other one with the land use sections in terms of the table for the mortuary, let me just find that briefly here.
I think it's nine dash 3.330.
Yep. You beat me to it. Yes, thank you.
And is that, is that sufficient, Laura? Does that give you everything?
Yes, that'll work, thank you.
All right, and I think I saw a second by Mayor Pro Tim Newsom.
You did.
All right. And I will hand that over to the city clerk to read the ordinance and do a roll call.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Atascadero, California, amending Title IX Planning and Zoning, Section nine dash two point 112 Permit Time Limits, Section nine dash three point two three zero Agriculture and Residential District allowable land uses, Section nine dash three point two six two Property Development Standards, RMF, Section nine dash three point three three zero Non-Residential District allowable land uses, Section nine dash three point three three one Mixed Use Residential Density, Section nine dash three point four three zero Public Districts allowable land uses, Section nine dash three point five zero zero Definitions, Section nine dash four point one zero seven Side Setbacks, Section nine dash four point one one two Measurement of Height, Section nine dash four point one one three Height Limitations, Section nine dash four point one two eight Fencing and Screening, Section nine dash six point one zero three Accessory Storage, Section nine dash six point one oh five Home Occupations, Section nine dash six point one zero six Residential Accessory Uses, Section nine dash six point one one two Farm Animal Raising, Section nine dash six point one one three Interim Agricultural Uses, Section nine dash nine point one zero two General Definitions and determining this ordinance is exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act. Council member Borbo.
Yes.
Council member Daris.
Yes.
Council member Funk.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Newsom.
Yes.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
I think that is the longest ordinance you've had to read so far.
Yes, wow, good job, Laura, thanks.
Director, good job. I know that's a lot of work. We appreciate all that you and your team do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
All right, we have no management reports this evening, so we are on to council announcements and committee reports. And we still have closed session, so I would just ask if you're able to skip a report or go really short. I think that would help us tonight. So I will just go according to my squares, my Hollywood squares. And we'll start with council member Funk.
At Homeland Services Oversight Council last week. And we're, and I also should mention that I presented to the county board of supervisors on behalf of HSOC on the fourth of May.
Thank you. I, council member Daris.
Air Pollution Control Board meets tomorrow morning and then that's it.
Mayor Pro Tim Newsom.
And have nothing to report at this time.
Council member Borbo.
I did not have any meetings, but I would note that at last week's county board supervisors meeting, they voted five to zero to spend $32,000 on a study to address the impacts of the county leaving the, the Integrated Waste Management Authority. So that, that is an issue for the IWM.
Okay, thank you. Last Friday, I had a mayor's meeting. We had an update from Wade Horton and Carolyn Burke from the county on homelessness. So nothing that council member Funk hasn't already told you, but it was a very good and thorough report. nothing that Councilmember Funk hasn't already told you, but it was a very good and thorough report and a lot of work being done and coordinated at a regional level. And I know our own Councilmember Funk is a big part of that. So thank you for that. I am, Rochelle and I met with Frank Rimkus and Jeff Nelson, owners of Galaxy Theater and the Colony Square Project there. The foreclosure has been stalled, but unfortunately still moving forward early June. And so they have asked us, I'm going to be putting together a letter to send to the letter, to the lender, and we are pursuing what sort of options can we do to assist in any way that we can. So keeping, keeping some fingers crossed and doing, doing some work there to see what we can do. And with that, I will move on to any individual determinations or actions. Any of staff? All right, seen none. We will go ahead and adjourn our regular meeting and we will reconvene or recess to our closed session meeting that is still in process. And I will let our city attorney let everyone know what we were, we are continuing to.
Right. And you're not adjourning the regular meeting, you're just recessing.
We're just, thank you. We don't do this often, so it's only the second time. So we're recessing the regular meeting and going back into closed session. Do you need to note those items again?
Yeah, I could, just for the record, the remaining closed session items are going to be labor negotiations and the negotiator is the city manager and the employees or organizations are identified in the agenda and then also the city manager evaluation.
And are you expecting that we'll have a report out?
I do not expect there will be any report out of closed session.
Okay, thank you. And so for the attendees, we will ask you to go ahead and leave because we are going, well, we're going to leave and go back into a closed session. So this will actually close down, I think. Luke, is that what you'll be doing, closing this down? Because we're not going to have a report out later?
Correct. We'll end the Zoom webinar like we usually do.
Okay, fabulous. All right. Thank you all for attending this evening. We're going to head into closed session and I'm sure we'll be seeing you soon. Thanks. So council has returned from closed session and there is no reportable action that was taken. And with that, we will adjourn our regular meeting. Good night all.
Good night.
Good night.